Thank you for being here and being present and joining us for an in-person meeting. And I'm really glad to have all of you here. Let's call the November 24th, our November 24th city council meeting. And let's begin our meeting with good evening and thank you all for joining us here in person and those that are watching online for this meeting. We are glad to be able to have you join us. We'd first like to get started with introductions around the dais and we'll start with our city clerk.
Good evening, Stephanie Kelly, City Clerk.
Good evening, Andrea Leslie White, City Attorney.
Good evening, Dimple Ashmira, at large.
Good evening, Renee Johnson, and I'm honored to represent District 4.
Good evening, everyone. Jane Smith, at large.
Marcus Jones, City Manager.
Kyle Lyles, Mayor.
Good evening, Dante Anderson, Mayor Pro Tem, District 1.
Malcolm Graham, District 2.
Ed Driggs, District 7.
Edwin Peacock, District 6.
LaWanna Mayfield, Council Member at Large.
Good evening, I'm Victoria Wallington, and I have the pleasure of serving you as a member at large.
Good evening, Tiamona Brown, Charlotte City Council, District 3.
All right. Thank you. We begin our meeting with an invocation, an expression of inspiration, and followed by the pledge of allegiance. This invocation is intended to solemnize our proceedings. We understand that we celebrate the religious diversity of our community, including those without a religious faith. So tonight, I'd like to be able to stand and have you stand with me if you choose to have a blessing for our city. Father God, you can see us in so many ways. Let us hope that you see us tonight in a way that we believe that all of us want to be. We want to be people that make this city better. We want to make sure that people have the opportunity to thrive in our city. We hope that we have the wellness to be able to do this together. One of the things that we know we've gone through some difficulties for the last couple of weeks. It's been very, very hard. So, Lord, please give us a moment of solemn prayer so that we can begin to understand that not everyone has the ability to be with us today, and there are some of those that did not have the opportunity to come back to their homes and their family and their businesses. We believe that you live to help us thrive, and we hope that you will give our city and all of our people in our city the ability to do just that. So, Lord, we know it's Thanksgiving time. We know that there are going to be people that don't have food that need food. Let us think about that as we begin to think how we can do and be better people. With your grace, amen.
Amen.
The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. The first item on our agenda is our consent items. Ms. Marie, please.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Council. I've had a chance to speak with many of you, but is there any other questions on the consent items? And I also need to note, I believe I sent you earlier, the item number 23 is being deferred. Also, item number 24, Scaly Bark Station Drainage is moving forward in December. So both of those, 23 and 24, are being pulled from the consent items.
All right. So, any other deferrals for this item? All right. With that, do I have a motion for approval of the items that we have for agreement? And do we have those? Do I have a motion?
May I have a question for clarification?
I'm sorry, Ms. Mayfield.
You just asked that there were any other items for the referral versus do we have any items to pull?
Do we have any others?
So, for items to pull, I am asking for a separate, just for a separate vote, just for a discussion on number 20.
On item number 20?
Excuse me, 22. My apologies.
Item 22, real estate appraisals and appraisal reviews. Is that correct, Ms. Mayfield?
Correct.
All right. Ms. Mayfield, do you have a comment about that?
I do, but I guess someone needs to make a motion because I'm not.
Do we have someone to make a motion for this, for approval?
For item 22?
For item 22.
So, are we going to vote on the other ones and then take up 22, or you want to 22 first?
All right. So, Mr. Driggs has suggested that we have all of those except items 22, 23, and 24, that we take a vote and then come back to the...
Second.
We have a motion and a second for that. Is there any discussion? Hearing, no discussion. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. The motion for...
For discussion?
Discussion.
I will be voting no for item 20.
Item 20.
This is a motion for everything?
This is a motion for everything.
Okay.
Right.
Since we just aware everything, and I didn't want to pull it for a separate, I would have just motion as...
Ms. Mayfield, I'm sorry.
So, the manager, you got it.
You got that in contact?
All right. Let's go ahead, and I believe we have a vote for the consent with every, all of the items except 20, 22, 23, and 24.
Right, and we voted, I think, right?
We haven't voted yet. So, all in favor, raise your hand. Okay, I believe that's unanimous.
Any opposed?
Any opposed? Ms. Mayfield, all right. Let's move to the next step on our agenda, then.
We have to do 22.
22. Let's start with 22, which is real estate appraisals and appraisal reviews. Is there a motion?
Well, total.
Second.
They have a motion and a second. Any further comments?
I know it's just a comment for Marie to thank you for the information that you provided to me earlier as I reached out, and the fact that I want to thank staff for the work that they did to make sure that we have an opportunity to have very diverse businesses to be aligned regarding our real estate appraisals and our appraisal review. So it's really just an opportunity to thank you, Marie, for your assistance on this.
All right, we're good. Do we have another, anyone else for comment? No one else for comment. So, all in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed?
I don't oppose it.
All right, Ms...
There's no opposing. It's unanimous.
It's unanimous, so thank you. All right. The next item that we have is a recognition for an awareness day.
We'll vote on item 20. I thought we excluded item 20 from the consent, and therefore we haven't taken action on that. Is that right?
I believe that the clerk is going to record a no on item 20 for Ms. Mayfield.
Right, just for Ms. Mayfield.
As part of the collective.
And everyone else.
Okay.
Okay.
Weird, but that's all right.
23 was deferred. Yes, right. So, we have completed our consent items, and we have an award and recognition. This is a special recognition, and I believe that Ms. Ashmira is going to present it for us.
Is anyone here to accept it?
No, there's no one here to accept it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, this awareness is for prematurity Awareness Month and Prematurity Awareness Day. So we have this proclamation by the mayor, whereas families face serious health risks and Novant Health fights for their health by supporting research, leading programs, and providing education and advocacy. And whereas, Novant Health is committed to amplifying the voices of pregnant people and families in national prenatal care for all, increase awareness of the impacts of implicit bias on maternal health care, and raise awareness of the importance of optimal preconception health as a strategy to improve maternal health, reduce preterm birth, infant mortality, and maternal mortality. And whereas, Novant Health will continue their work in the community to address the maternal and infant health crisis of prematurity, as well as the social determinants of health such as transportation and housing. And whereas, the month of November is recognized as Prematurity Awareness Month, and November 17th is recognized as World Prematurity Day to raise awareness. Now therefore, she, Y. Alexander Lyles, Mayor of Charlotte, do hereby proclaim November as Prematurity Awareness Month, and November 17th as World Prematurity Awareness Day in the city of Charlotte, and encourage all residents to join us in special observance. So to all the practitioners who work in this field, thank you for all that you do to keep our moms safe.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ashmira. And now, we will move on to our public forum. We would like to thank all of you for joining us on behalf of the entire city council. And I ask that all speakers and audience members be civil and courteous in their use of language. Speakers are encouraged to address the council and to refrain from responding to audience members. Likewise, audience members should be courteous to hear each speaker and not yell out or interrupt them. We want to ensure that everyone has a chance to be heard. Since there are more than 10 speakers, each speaker will have two minutes to address the council. So let's begin, Mayor Pro Tem, with the first speaker.
Yes, okay. Can we have Lauren Patterson? If you could come down to one mic, and then if we could have Frank Devine. Frank, are you present? Okay, if you could come to the other mic, then you can be ready to go. And you'll have two minutes once you begin to speak. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Lauren Patterson, District 3, and member of the Bike Advisory Committee. And I'm here to talk about the need for more bicycles funding within our city. Biking was my primary form of transit for over eight years, and that was also in the deadliest city in America and the most sprawled. And when I moved to Yorkmont, that was the time I actually had to buy a car, because crossing South Tryon and Woodlawn, even though it is only five minutes from the rail trail and trains and a regular bus network, I'm still very disconnected, and it's very unsafe with the highway on and off ramps, to be able to bike in my area. So, I just wanted to talk through that getting through safely is a key aspect that makes me not be able to bike currently today. And what's needed to fix this is really not that much. I wanted to really discuss that biking is the lowest cost per mile infrastructure that we can invest in. It can cost as little as $5,000 per mile and increase access for a wide variety of people. It can also be implemented quickly with minimal disruption on roadways, and it can increase access to transit by over nine times, which is a stat from our own Charlotte's Better Bus Plan. It also is one of the only form of transit that has a positive ROI. So, being able to invest more in this infrastructure and be able to meet more needs, especially as our city continues to grow, is very important to be able to maintain the same quality of life that we currently have today. It also helps improve economic mobility since it is a cheap, reliable form of transit that all can have access to, especially children who could walk and bike to schools and help relieve that form of transit. And another fun fact is it is known as the happiest form of transit. So, thank you so much for listening to me today.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson. We'll have Mr. Devine. You'll have two minutes. Is Matt Westler, if you could come down, and when Mr. Devine is done, you'll have your two minutes. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Frank Devine, and I've had the privilege of serving on Charlotte's Bicycle Advisory Committee for the past three years. Tonight, I'm here to encourage you to take the opportunity to increase the dedicated funding for the city's bicycle program, now that the PAVE Act has been approved by Mecklenburg County voters. Last year, along with Sustained Charlotte, the BAC advocated for increasing the budget to $10 million per year. Despite proposing the largest transportation bond in Charlotte's history at over $238 million, city council and staff elected to keep spending flat at $4 million per year, even as inflation stretched the meager existing funding thin. With the existing funding, Charlotte continues to fall short of reaching its goals of 10 miles of protected bike lanes per year. I'm aware of the projects that we have completed successfully, namely College Street and MLK Uptown, as well as Parkwood, but those are simply taking too long. We need a cultural shift where we don't just look at Vision Zero and street safety as a budgetary line item. We need infrastructure and action. Fifty-three people have died on Charlotte Road so far this year. These are people with friends, families, and communities that have been left reeling. Enough is enough. Fully fund and build out the seven miles of the Uptown Cycle Link. It should not take this long. Complete the Bike Lane Vertical Element Pilot. No pilot should take over a year and a half to get any traction. This is a disgrace from the Department of Transportation. And then also, we need to actually enforce parking in bike lanes and make a working system to report it. The Charlotte Plus app has been hailed as a great way to save time for calling 311. If you actually tried to report an infraction in the bike lane, you get a ticket emailed back to you and say, "Sorry, we don't handle that. Call 911." With all we hear about 911 response times being so grand, we're supposed to call 911 for someone illegally parked rather than reporting it asynchronously through the app? We can do better. In 2024, we had a rapid response quality of life team introduced to handle these issues. Where's the update on that? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Devine. Jacob Krasinski, are you present? If you could come down, that'd be great. You go ahead and proceed. You have two minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of city council. My name is Matt Westler. I'm a District 2 resident, a member of the city's Bicycle Advisory Committee, and a board member of the Bidleville Smallwood Community Organization. One month ago, while walking my three-year-old Wheaton terrier, Ruby Rose, she slipped out of her collar, ran into Eastway Drive, and was struck by a driver.
Yes.
I screamed first in fear and then in anguish as I watched this happen. A volunteer tried CPR to save her life, but she sadly died on her way to the emergency vet. Though this story is hard to tell, I share it not because of the grief my wife and I still feel, but because what happened to Ruby is not an isolated tragedy. It reflects a painful pattern on Charlotte streets. Twelve years ago, at the same spot where Ruby was killed, Lola Jean Williams also lost her life to a hit-and-run driver. NC DOT Ped Bike Crash Data show that the tragic consequences of roads like Eastway Drive, planned and designed to funnel high volumes of cars through places where people live and work, are not an anomaly in Charlotte. They are the consequence of decades of decisions by... They are the consequence of decades of decisions by past city leaders to prioritize vehicular throughput over the safety and comfort of those outside a vehicle. On November 4th, voters granted this council the power to decide how $100 million a year in new taxpayer money would be spent on Charlotte's roads. I voted yes on that referendum. In honor of Ruby and all the victims of roadway violence, my ask of you, council, therefore, as you discuss how to spend that money, is to not repeat the mistakes of your predecessors, but rather to resolve to making the safety and comfort of people outside the car your unequivocal priority, and to communicate that expectation clearly to CDOT and planning leadership. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Abdullah, are you here? Chee Abdullah? If you can make your way down to this podium, when you get there, you'll have two minutes. You go right ahead, sir. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Lyles, council members, and Charlotte residents. My name is Jacob Krasinski, and I'm here to share updates to my 311 call center solution, which I first spoke to you all about in August. Since then, we've made some big improvements, and I am here to ask for a pilot meeting. We recognize the city's recent success in integrating full Spanish language support to the CLT Plus app. Inspired by your commitment to accessibility, we also have integrated full Spanish support into our 311 solution, so that every resident can get instant help for their problems and their desired language. We've also enhanced security and accuracy for our solution. After our conversation in August, I got the opportunity to speak with Pamela Joyner. She was able to share the scale of the 311 challenge. Seventy-plus reps, 40,000 to 60,000 calls a month, utilizing 15-plus applications to answer those questions. While I haven't been able to secure a follow-up meeting, I truly believe this is a great way for you and I to make a quick and appreciated impact in residents' lives. That is why we've also committed to a start small and succeed fast strategy. Instead of tackling everything at once, we are going to prototype one to two of the most common inquiries, and just a 10% and just a 10% to 20% drop in those calls would free up thousands of representative hours every month. Charlotte would be our very first city partner. I live here, I love it here, and because of that, I want to see us lead, and I am willing to do this pilot at cost. Mayor Lyles, council members, all I'm asking for tonight is a formal meeting with city staff and applicable partners.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Ms. Abernathy, are you present? Okay, if you could come to this podium, that would be great. And Mr. Abdullah, you go right ahead, you have two minutes.
Hi, thank you for having me here. It's a pleasure to see all of you guys today. I'd like to ask if you could visit Cedar Grove, savecedergrove.org, that for folks here in the room and online. I'm here tonight to talk about the work that's happened there. When you visit the Cedar Grove website, I suggested that you go there because we can walk through several things that have happened with that property. Cedar Grove is a once abandoned piece of property in the Beatty's Ford corridor. It has been cleaned up by some efforts with myself and some other partners, and now, instead of a blight, abandoned blight on the neighborhood, it has become a communal spot, a place where conversations can happen. Research is happening, and the community is coming together around this really historically significant piece of property. At the website, you can donate. We are funded by donations, and they are always helpful and appreciated, so please consider that in this time of giving. I'd like to invite you all to join us for our Third Annual Reef Day Ceremony, which is on December 13th, where we honor the veterans that rest in Cedar Grove. We started our work there discovering six veterans. Through the research, we were up to 55 veterans that lay in that property that, again, was abandoned and blighted until we stepped in and started to make an effort. Through that effort, we've been able to generate several, several things. The Reef Day Ceremony, we will have our Sixth Annual Memorial Day Ceremony this year. We've launched a program for children called Westside Digital that explores that history and advances their skills in digital storytelling. And we also have a podcast honoring the soldiers at Cedar Grove. It's called The Lost Soldiers Podcast, hosted by myself and Mr. Tom Hanchett. I encourage all of you guys to give that a listen and learn about the great work, the veterans, the people, and the stories that live on that property. Very quickly, my next opportunity there is workforce development, and the reason I've come to you tonight is to ask for your support in pursuing a program that will allow for workforce development to happen locally, with local jobs behind it. We've done the work there, and we know the people.
Thank you, Mr. Abdullah. Ms. Harden, are you present? Nai Harden? Okay. Ms. Ottley, Cass Ottley? Elena Muller, are you present? Donna Skuman? Shayna Silver? If you could come down to this podium, Ms. Silver, that would be great, and you go right ahead, Ms. Abernathy.
Hi, my name is Kathy Abernathy, and I am on the board, the condo association board, for 230 South Tryon. I'm here to address the council tonight because we have, it's a small issue, but it's still an issue that we have with the valet program uptown. In particular, we have the restaurant Ruth Chris next to us, and they have been violating the conditions of their permit for a long time. We finally had a couple residents go to them, this was back in March, to ask, could we just have a little space so that people getting medications, groceries, other food delivered, or getting picked up by Uber or Lyft, have a spot for that? The initial text went to a manager at Ruth Chris, and they said, "Oh, absolutely, that makes sense, we want to be nice to our neighbor," but then nothing changed. And further texts resulted in no change. So, in July, I was asked by some residents to intervene, and Commissioner Graham was able to give me the contact information for the CDOT. And I will say that they have been great at responding to me and understanding what the issues are. They provided me with a permit. I saw that they're, they're just parking wherever they want, as long as they want. They're not doing valet, so getting cars in and then moving them on. They're simply parking cars all over Tryon in that block. Regardless of the fact that the CDOT has communicated with them several times via email, they've even had a meeting. Sophie Mobility, who's the valet service, and Ruth Chris have just basically thumbed their noses at the rules. They just continued, last night, they had cars parked many times in the evening, all the way to the corner.
Thank you, Ms. Abernathy. I'm going to connect you with Ms. Babson, she's right over there, and she'll discuss things further with you.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember-elect JD, if you could join us, and you go right ahead, ma'am, you have two minutes.
Evening, Mayor, council members, and city staff. My name is Shayna Silver. I am the founder of Directions to Discovery, a Charlotte-based program dedicated to supporting autistic youth and young adults as they move towards independence. Every week, I meet with families across of Charlotte who are struggling with something many residents never see, and that is young adults with autism aging out of school services with nowhere to go, no social support, no daily living support, no transitional housing, no path towards employment or independent, or independent life. As a city, we are losing their talent, their brilliance, and their potential, simply because there are not enough programs created for them. Directions to Discovery was created to fill in the gap. We provide independent living, skill building, routine development, and in-home support, social and peer development, career readiness, family support, and safe structure programs for autistic teens and young adults who need guidance transitioning to adulthood. Our families are not asking for luxury, they're asking for safety, skills, and opportunity. They're asking for a chance for their loved ones to live with dignity in the same city they grew up in. Charlotte is growing fast, but not the services for our autism communities. Right now, parents are having to quit their jobs because there are no support, other fears of what happens to their child when there are no longer care for them. We are asking the city to consider partnership with us to, to recognize autism in its independent living support as an essential part of Charlotte's services landscape. Thank you for your time and your leadership, for your commitment to all Charlotte families.
Thank you, thank you very much. Ms. Cummings, Maggie Cummings? Yeah, thank you, and you can go ahead and have a seat. Thank you for sharing your perspective. Ms. Cummings, if you could come down, and councilmember-elect, go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council colleagues. Tonight is the last meeting of this council before I'm sworn in next Monday, and I want to briefly acknowledge what our city has lived through this past week. Charlotte was met with the presence of CBP in our neighborhoods, something we are not used to seeing at this scale. We are not often a political body, but sometimes the moment meets us, and this was one of those moments. What I saw in our community was incredible. It was the children of immigrants, young people who took their fear, their love, and their courage into the streets on Central Avenue in front of Manolo's Bakery in the heart of District 5, night after night, standing up for their families who were too afraid to leave home. Their leadership should make every one of us proud. I am proud that me and Representative Jordan Lopez joined them every night, and community leaders like Reverend Corinne Mack, Beth and Kyle Clements, and Brian Ballard, and Manolo himself were out there every day. I want to thank council, especially the chair of the Budget Governance and Intergovernmental Relations Committee, Councilmember Ashmira, and members Brown, Mayfield, Mitchell, and Peacock, and Deputy City Manager Sean Heath and city staff for acting quickly in approving $100,000 in short-term emergency funding for organization helping families with rent and utilities. That was meaningful action when people needed it the most. I also want to thank our police, the officers who showed up with compassion, empathy, and calm during an incredible difficult week. I was in close contact with Lieutenant Jenkins and Sergeant Decker in the Eastway Division, and I'm grateful for the way they protected these young people exercising their right. And I'll close with this, we can do more, and we should, should do more. In 2019, Charlotte became the first city in the nation to sign an immigration compact. Our residents know what local government can and cannot do, but these, but they also expect us to show up, not just with statements, but with presence. So, I invite all of us to be in community. Support the immigrant-owned businesses in East Charlotte, on South Boulevard, and across our city, and in moments like this and matters when we stand alongside our people. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember-elect. Ms. Marinescu, are you present? Okay, Mr. Schultis, Schultises, if you could come down here, that'd be great, and Ms. Cummings, you go right ahead.
Thank you, and good evening to Mayor Lyles and councilmembers. Fun fact, the councilmember-elect was one of the best students I ever taught at Queen's University of Charlotte. I stand in front of you today as Chair of the Charlotte International Cabinet. We are here to express our sincere gratitude for the city's efforts to support Charlotte's immigrant community during the recent Customs and Border Protection operations. We encourage you to continue supporting the well-being and dignity of all who call Charlotte home. Like you, the cabinet hears from so many of our community members who are living in fear and uncertainty. Please continue to make public statements that offer reassurance, clarity, and a strong reaffirmation of Charlotte's values. We applaud the city's decision to create a $100,000 fund to support our neighbors financially. We support the decision to administer that fund through trusted community organizations. We hope that you will consider adding additional funding as needed. We are grateful for your ongoing efforts to highlight trusted community organizations and resources, from legal assistance to crisis support, that ensure people know where to turn in moments of fear or confusion. The commitment to transparency and to community partnership strengthens trust across our city. Thank you for sharing, standing with immigrant communities, and for working to ensure that the Queen's City remains a welcoming, inclusive, and safe place for all who call it home. The cabinet is working on a report that highlights the international contributions of our, or the contributions of our foreign-born community that they make to our city, from international business, to immigrant entrepreneurs, to the many people and organizations who enrich our community's culture and vibrancy. We look forward to sharing that report with you in the new year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cummings. Mr. Justin Baker, are you present? If you could come down to this podium, that would be fantastic. Thank you. You go right ahead, sir. You have two minutes.
Esteemed councilors, I want to begin by thanking City Council and Mecklenburg County Council for its continued support and expansion of services at animal care and control. However, as a volunteer performing trap neuter return, I cannot help but notice that the animal welfare crisis continues to worsen. As apartment complexes continue to ban or phase out pet ownership at an alarming rate, surrenders to shelters are skyrocketing nationwide. While the upcoming shelter renovation will provide much-needed relief to the city, we can also take steps to prevent pets from being surrendered or abandoned by preventing them from being born. While trap neuter return is an effective program, many pet owners continue to refuse to spay or neuter their animals and allow them to roam. Backyard breeding remains widespread, and every box of unsold kittens or puppies dumped by a breeder at a rescue's doorstep or on the roadside only continues to exacerbate the problem. Animals given away for free also provide a ready supply for dogfighting rings. While broad-spectrum mandatory spay-neuter ordinances are typically ineffective, carefully targeted ones can be. For example, Jasper County, South Carolina passed a specifically targeted mandatory spay-neuter ordinance to address bully breeds and dogfighting, and has seen success. I therefore ask city council to consider the implementation of a targeted mandatory spay-neuter ordinance for specific dog breeds based on shelter data, mandatory spay-neuter for all adoptions and sales of dogs or cats in the city, and mandatory microchipping of pets. Additionally, I ask city council to increase its funding of spay-neuter vouchers for low-income households and rescues, particularly to address the roaming stray and feral cat population. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Felix Gonzalez, are you present? Okay, Mr. Baker, you go right ahead.
Thank you so much. Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. My name is Justin Baker, and I'm here on behalf of the World Mission Society Church of God in Mount Holly. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all tonight. We would like to briefly introduce our organization and extend an invitation to our upcoming human trafficking forum on December 4th, 2025, at 7:00 p.m., hosted at 707 Westland Farm Road here in Mount Holly and also in South Charlotte. This forum will feature guest speakers from the Charlotte Mecklenburg County Police Department and the Gaston County Police Department, along with Hope United Survivor Network Partners, as well as representatives from Pat's Place Child Advocacy Center. Their collective expertise will help raise awareness and provide practical guidance on identifying and reporting human trafficking in our communities. Human trafficking continues to pose a serious threat in our region. Last year, the National Human Trafficking Hotline received 638 contacts from North Carolina, identifying 301 cases involving 580 victims. Additionally, the Charlotte Mecklenburg Police Department reported a 77% increase in human trafficking cases year over year. These numbers underscore the importance of strong community partnerships to prevent vulnerable individuals and also support survivors. By the way of background, the World Mission Society Church of God is a Christian-based organization with more than 7,500 churches in 175 different countries. Through our 21,000 volunteer initiatives involving 2.6 million participants, we have supported relief efforts, environmental cleanups, blood drives.
Thank you, sir. If you have any written comments, you can give it to the clerk, and she can share that with us. Thank you for coming out and sharing your perspective.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir. And that concludes our public forum for the evening, and we will proceed with Agenda Item Number Five.
Thank you for sharing with us your perspectives and concerns. We appreciate that you joined with us this evening. And now, while we're concluding this, we're going to move right into our public hearing, Item Number Five, which is a public hearing on Kelly, I want to say Kelly Alexander for sure, and Margaret AG Alexander for the House Historic Landmark Designation. and Margaret G. Alexander for the House Historic Landmark Designation. We're now going to open this up as our public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers signed up?
Move closer. I'm sorry. There is a speaker on number... No, sir. No, ma'am. There's not a speaker on 13, on number five.
So we do not have a speaker regarding the Alexander House. So do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You have a motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, please raise your hand. Anyone objecting? All right, thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt a public, adopt an ordinance with an effective date of November 24, 2025, designating the property known as the Kelly M. and Margaret G. Alexander House as a historic landmark?
Move second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussions. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Is anyone object? Without any objection. Just thank you for the work that we get to do on these kind of really important people that have helped us who we are, have helped us make who we are as a city. So thank you very much for that recognition. All right, on item number six, we have a public hearing on a resolution to close a portion of alleyway between Liggett Street and Bullard Street. We're now going to open the public hearing on a resolution to close that portion of an alleyway between that. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
No, ma'am.
If we not have any speakers, do we have a motion to close the public hearing and to adopt a resolution and close portion of the alleyway between Liggett Street and Bullard Street?
Move second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. All in favor, please raise your hand. Anyone object? No, we're good. Thank you very much. So the next item that we have is a public hearing on the Emerson Pond voluntary annexation. Madam Clerk, any speakers for this one? All right.
Move close.
We have a motion to close. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing and adopt an annexation ordinance with an effective date of November 24, 2025, to extend the corporate limits to include this property and assign it to adjacent City Council District 5?
Move A and B.
Second.
We have a motion of A and B and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Anyone objecting? Thank you very much. The next item is a public hearing and decision on Garrison Industrial Phase II voluntary annexation. We're now going to open public hearing. Is there any speaker, Madam Clerk? So that we do not have a speaker, do I have a motion?
Move, move to move A and B.
Second.
Have a motion to close A and B and approve the annexation. All in favor, please raise your hands. Anyone object? So thank you very much. The next item that we have is the public hearing on the River South voluntary annexation. Madam Clerk, any speakers?
No, ma'am.
All right. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing and adopt an annexation ordinance with an effective date of November 24 at 2025, to extend the corporate limits to include this property and assign it to adjacent City Council District 3?
Move A and B.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please raise your hands. All right, we're ready to move to the next item. The next item is item nine. Hearing, a public hearing and decision on River South voluntary annexation. Any speaker, Madam Clerk?
No, ma'am.
All right. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing and to adopt an annexation ordinance with an effective date of November 24? Must be a lucky day, 2025, to extend the corporate limits to include this property and assign it to adjacent City Council District 3?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Anyone oppose? That's agreeable. The next item is our policy section of our agenda, and so we'll start off with the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. During the last business meeting, there was a discussion to have a action tonight with the community area plans. What I'd like to do is utilize the manager's report just to have an update of where we are, to set the framework for the discussion or the vote of the community area plans. And Mayor, members of council, while it's later on on the agenda, maybe there's an opportunity to keep them together and have the conversation, then the recommendations and the vote after this presentation.
But we put this into Ms. Watlington's hands. Ms. Watlington.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Manager. If, Monica, you'll be coming up? If Ms. Holmes will come up and give the overview, and then I'll share where we landed. And while she's coming, I just want to say thank you for your work, as well as the City Attorney's Office and Deputy Manager Craig. You guys got together very quickly after the conversation we had here, and I appreciate your willingness and your openness to brainstorm together and come up with some solutions. So thank you.
No problem. And as this is being pulled up, just to frame it a little bit. So what this presentation is really is, there's a little bit of a reminder of what area plans are. There's also just kind of what it means with an adopted plan versus not adopted, and a preview of that path forward. So as we get into the slides, I just want to be really clear. That's the intention, is to kind of set that frame and tone. So again, our purpose this evening is council action, and those decisions are in y'all's hands. We've been here two weeks ago and many times before, as you can see here. Oops. And we want to just start off with, again, how do community area plans impact you? How does it impact the decisions in your community? As you can see, the map here, it highlights the 14 different geographies. Each one has a unique area plan associated. And the intention of these 14 is really that everyone has a similar framework to work from. So staff started this project about two and a half, three years ago, focusing on how we can really call out what matters most and ensure that our community's growth benefits everyone, and it provides new guidance for private and public investment. So area plans that are adopted, how will they be used? They'll be used really first in our rezoning process. So to highlight what is, how do we see this project meeting our community's biggest needs? Is it addressing our concerns? Does it represent the character that's outlined in the area plan and outlined and seen in that community? Can our roads and utilities support it? Is it a development that can be supported? And then how does it add to the transportation, open space improvements? So is a project bringing improvements to the table? So that's how those area plans will be used and vetted against in the rezoning process. And then many similar things you'll see happen on the capital improvement side. So does a capital improvement project meet the priorities as outlined in the area plan? Does a project align with our policy and priority? Does it maximize the city's resources? And does it support the area for future growth? So we've talked a lot about Steelbury Acres, and we even had some comments at the last meeting on November 10 that were, let's show some more examples and talk through exactly how a proposal may be looked at when you have an area plan in place. So the top two you see, that map on the left should look pretty familiar. That is the current adopted 2040 policy map. And that has, you can see the single-family, that light yellow is the single-family neighborhood, Steelbury Acres. The purple is what is around it. It's recommended for manufacturing and logistics in the current adopted map. What you see on the right there is what manufacturing and logistics looks like when it is actually built. So that's the form that you would see there. That's what exists today in our policy, that top line. So right now, when a project's coming in, so let's say someone is coming in and proposing to build what is on that top right in one of those purple areas, you would vet that against the 2040 plan, and you would say, does it advance any of the 10 goals of the 2040 plan? So we would look at the map. We would also go through those 10 goals and assess whether it does or does not. So that is how it would be measured today. That's what you see in your staff analysis. That's what you see when a proposed rezoning comes in. So what you can see on the bottom is what a revised policy map looks like in the area. So the community area plan proposes changing that to what we call industrial mixed use, that lighter purple. So I put a little black star on the top and on the bottom showing like that is the pretend proposed development. To be clear, that's not an actual proposed development. This is just a scenario. So in that bottom right, you can see what that industrial mixed use would look like if developed in that regard. So it looks a little different. It's a little less auto-oriented, you know, manufacturing and logistics versus a more walkable built form in that bottom right. So then you would also look at, what does the community area plan say? So you would check it against, does it advance the prioritized goals? So for example, in this, the example we're looking at in Steelbury Acres, a prioritized goal is an integrated natural and built environment. So you would say, does this project include integrating a natural built environment? Is it good for both the existing neighborhood? Is it good for the future community? So you would assess it against that. You would assess it against the adjacent neighborhood. So does it respect the adjacent neighborhood? And you would look at some of the new policy that's in the area plan. So for example, in the area plan, there's a policy that says, when next to a single-family, you should include large buffers and less intense manufacturing development. So you would make sure that, as the rezoning proposing that, is it providing that larger buffer? Is it providing more separation between the single-family neighbor and the adjacent uses? So those are two examples, the top one being how you would do it today, and the bottom one being how you would do it when you have an adopted area plan. So again, I want to just map that out. I just walked through the example. But to kind of summarize that, on the left, you see when you have it, whether today or in the future, when you have an adopted area plan, this is how the development is assessed. This is how it would impact our rezoning decisions. So you'll see a new staff analysis with an adopted plan. You'll see those prioritized goals. We'll vet it against the revised policy map. We'll also reference the policies that are in the adopted plan, so you can see how it measures against those policies. We'll also reference assessment tables. So again, that's, is the project providing transportation improvements, open space improvements? And then we'll also take into account the environmental justice, environmental impact considerations. So without community area plans, it'll be just the way it is now, where you'll have the existing staff analysis. You'll vet against the 10 2040 goals. So you'll take those 10 goals, and you'll vet it against the adopted policy map. So that's how those two will play out in this interim period. You'll see those two different things. So what happens in geographies if we, if we're split, right? If we're going to have some in Phase 1 and some in Phase 2, as we've been discussing? The ones that are not adopted will do, continue to do, and targeted engagement. So in-person, virtual, meet people where they are. We're happy to do walking tours. And we'll continue refining, specifically focused on established and existing neighborhoods and contextual development that's appropriate for them. And then we will, if we need to add policies and make map changes in those area plans, we will do that. And then once we bring those forward for adoption, if there are new policies that are applicable citywide, that should be in all the area plans, then those will get added to the ones that are adopted in an earlier phase. So if ones are adopted this evening, if we come back and adopt others in the future, we will refer, they can be added basically to the ones that are adopted. And that same framework can continue going forward, meaning if at another point in the future, there's an important policy that we need to add, we'll go back, get them adopted, and add them to all the area plans, if that makes sense. So it's really an iterative approach. And again, you know, we're a little over two, two and a half years into the UDO. We're learning things. We're about five years into the 2040 plan. We're learning things. So we're going to be modifying policy as we see impacts and assess that things need to change, and they can go back and modify previously adopted policy. So just in summary, you've seen this slide before, so it's no surprise. This is just kind of what the area plans, we believe, do again. Whether all some are adopted, we believe that they help us get towards that 100% city coverage. They provide us with when, how, and what it should look like if neighborhoods evolve and change over time. They give us clear direction in rezonings, and they help us to memorialize where we want to see those transportation improvements and identify what they should be, the needs for them. And then last, but definitely not least, because we're hearing a lot about this, they help us understand and how we can reduce environmental impacts, whether that be manufacturing and logistics, whether that be transportation and transit investments, or whether that be from heat. So that is all I have for you. I'm happy to answer questions or provide more clarity if you have them.
All right, thank you. Before, we do have several speakers that we're going to join, but I'd like to recognize Councilmember Watlington for motion.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm happy to do that. I'd also like to ask a follow-up question. Do you want to do that before?
Please. No, I think as long as you get the motion on the floor and then go on with the discussion.
Perfect. Okay, well, then I'll start with the motion, and I move to adopt the following community area plans with the proposed changes. East inner, northeast inner, south inner, south middle, and if you've got a map in the studio, that would be fantastic.
Ms. Watlington, can you read the letters?
Sure, I'll read the letters. All right.
I can pull up this map. It doesn't have them color-coded, but I can pull up that first map that has, shows the 14.
I think we can do the letters, and everybody can mark them up.
It's in the email.
I move to adopt the following community area plans with the proposed changes. A, E, G, H, I, J, and K. Again, that's A, east inner, E, northeast inner, G, south inner, H, south middle, I, south outer, J, southwest middle, K, southwest outer, and to defer action on the following community area plans. B, C, D, F, L, M, and N until the March 23, 2026 council meeting. Again, that's B, east middle and outer, C, north inner, D, north middle and outer, F, northeast middle and outer, L, west inner, M, west middle, and N, west outer. Second. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Ms. Watlington, you still have the floor.
Yes. I wanted to make sure that it was clear, because it was very helpful for me, Monica. You alluded to it a little bit in your example. Can you please explain the relationship between the area plan, the parcel zoning designation that it is today, and what the difference can be, particularly for these deferred maps? When we talk about, its color is this, its actual zoning is this, but we can take it a step down, say from N1, is it N1A through N1F? And how does that give the residents more clarity as we take that next stab?
Yeah, so with the area plans, it is policy. So it does not impact a parcel's zoning today. So a parcel is zoned and can be utilized for that zoning category, whatever it is allowed today it can be utilized for. So if that's N1C, then whatever is allowed in N1C can be built on that. The area plan is guidance and policy, both broadly. So what our future text amendments may look like, that can be guided by policy. So if we were to refine the neighborhood 1 categories, we would have a broad, we would have a policy in the area plan, like the one, the example I gave you, we call it PT 5, that refines what should be allowed. So let's take into consideration the lot sizes. Let's take into consideration the type of road that it looks like, that it's on. Is it a four-lane road or a two-lane road? Is it in the middle of a neighborhood or not? So the area plan can set that policy and say, when you are considering to change the zoning, you should take into consideration these qualities. And if it does not meet these qualities, then we do not think that it should change zoning, that it should become more intense. Does that make sense? So if it is N1A and it's... So if it is N1A and it's in the middle of a neighborhood and all the lots around it are 50 feet wide, then you should not change the zoning to go to N1D or N1E or N1F. The area plan will not change that zoning, but it gives you guidance to say that if it were to come before you as a proposed rezoning, we do not think it is something you should support because of the adopted policy. So that's how we can start to draw that box. And then we can work on future text amendments that align to that policy within what's allowed by state law. So, you know, as long as we can do it within state law, we can change our regulations to match the policy.
Thank you for that and I'm sure it will come up again, but as we think about what's different, if we defer these seven, what is going to look different or what could look different by March?
I think it's, one, I think it's vetting and just checking some of those policies that are in it and making sure that are they refined and are they as clear as they should be? And does that resonate with the community? So I really want to have some targeted conversations specifically around a couple issues and really a lot of it is around established neighborhoods and what's happening either on the edges or what's happening within their, that community. So I think it's those two things. And then we'll, I think we could see some policies, just the wording change, maybe a little more needs to be added. I don't, I think we're very close. I think it's just making sure, one, people understand it and two, like, is it right? Are we hitting the right mark?
Thank you.
May. All right. I have a few people that have raised their hands, so I'm going to start with the dais around here. I believe it was Mr. Graham, followed by Mr. Driggs, and then Ms. Ashmira.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I want to thank the staff for the work that's already been done for sure and for the work that Councilmember Watlington has done thus far. I'm still a little puzzled though by your answer. I'm not sure specifically what's going to happen between now and March that we hadn't done between July and December, especially in reference to the west inner and the west outer, which is in District Two, and the west middle, which is in District Two. And we had an extensive outreach. I've been on the ground for months, talking to a wide variety of neighborhood leaders, met with staff on a wide variety of occasions. We were expected to vote on this at, as a whole in August, October, and here we are in November saying that we need to delay until March. So I'm a little puzzled in reference to what we're going to know differently in March. If we're waiting for 100% agreement, it's just not going to happen. I mean, if this is a continuation of a process that started with the 2040 plan, and there was some disagreement around this dais on that, we hand it off to the U D O, there certainly was disagreement around the dais on that. And now we are here with the area plans and there will be disagreements on that. I just think that at some point, my daughter's a basketball coach, she would say, you can't hold the ball, you have to dribble or shoot. Right? At some point, we gotta, we gotta make a decision. No, you don't pass, you dribble or shoot. Right? And I think that's where we're at right now, at least for me. And I met with staff earlier today, just trying to get an understanding of what it is that we're trying to do and accomplish, and I'm just not there yet. And so I'm having trouble supporting the motion on the floor. I hope that maybe you would take a friendly amendment and get mine done because we've done the work for the west middle, the west inner, the west outer. I think they're ready to move forward tonight. There are a number of other things that I know staff and I are, I talked to staff earlier today, that, that we still have to do, like the transportation plans is being delayed because we're still working on this. The environmental action plan is being delayed because we're still working on this. The infill standards is being delayed because we're working on this. And this is something that we were supposed to vote on in October, and now we're saying we're not going to do it until March. And so help me understand from a staff perspective, what more can be done, right? I'm just, and I heard your response, but it didn't move me at all to say, hey, this is why we need to wait another four months.
Yeah. I mean, I think if, if it is really the council's choice and, I mean, I think we, we need to make sure that if we defer some, we will, we talked today about this in a staff meeting, is that we will have to put together a very clear roadmap as to what we're addressing when. We have a broad framework, but that is, that's, I mean, that's what we will do in the next week or two is, is basically make sure we have a clear path.
I will listen before I maybe offer a substitute motion or amendment to include the ones that impact District Two. Because that is from my perspective, I think we've done the work, we've studied, we listened, we input. I'm not sure if there's going to be any difference between now versus March.
Except Madam Mayor, as a second to the, to the motion, given that the district council member has been working very closely with those three area plans in his communities, if the motion maker would accept the friendly amendment, I would certainly second it.
I'd rather see that as a substitution, only because I haven't spoken to the other council members that I already have spoken with on it, but certainly if it's a substitute motion, I'm, I'm for that to be heard on the floor.
Okay, well, but before we go there, let's go around and get some of the comments that were being asked for. Mr. Driggs and Ms. Mayfield, and then we'll come back, Ms. Ashmira and Swell, will come on the side as well.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if you all remember how I got pounded when I tried to push for adoption of all of these plans previously. And Mr. Graham, in fairness to the staff, this is not a recommendation of theirs. This is something that came out of the lack of consensus among us. I did after that last meeting, talk to staff and the council and established that the path of adopting these separately was possible, right? So at least we don't get hung up as a group on that issue alone. I still feel that, as I said then, the areas that do not have these adopted plans are going to be at a disadvantage. And you have to weigh the cost of that against whatever you think can be accomplished, to Mr. Graham's point, with several more months after the seven that we had. There are probably things pending that need to be addressed and I think the fact that the plans we adopt tonight will be modified to the extent that future changes are agreed to other plans indicates these are still open to change. We are not casting anything in stone. And I'm really just troubled, and you listen to the description we just got of the way the procedure has changed, there will be rezonings that we can't consider in the light of the area plans because they haven't been adopted yet. And I'm not convinced that all of the seven that are excluded from the proposed thing need to be deferred. So in my mind, for example, if we could move on the recommended approvals as a group and then consider the other ones, perhaps individually, and then decide defer or pass, and at least, for example, that would give Mr. Graham a chance to advocate for the plans in his area. And it feels to me like that solution makes more sense than trying to do anything in one, in one fell swoop. So I think when the time comes, my suggestion would be that we vote on the ones that are offered for approval without the action on the other ones and that we've considered the other plans, bring them up one at a time, say, okay, this is this one, where do we stand? And if it is the will of council to defer those, we should. But the impression I have from staff and also from talking to people otherwise is a couple of these are in this sort of pending situation because of what sounds like language issues or local, local area issues. And I really wonder whether the people who are advocating in those situations intend for those to be deferred. So I hope we'll be thoughtful about the deferrals, but I would at least hope that we can do them deliberately and consider them one at a time and then pass this, this recommended group immediately. Thank you.
Ms. Mayfield.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As a member who has been requesting for more than six months for this process to be broken out, and I will repeat again, we travel to other cities and attempt to bring back what is identified as best practices to Charlotte. Well, in those travels, one of the stops was in Denver. Denver did not pass our all-inclusive, we're going to do all the areas at once. They took their time and identified areas. I support us breaking up. I don't necessarily like the idea of just deferring. We need to take our time to get this right, but I do want to address, as a resident that actually lives in District Two and have had also many conversations with residents that live in the Coolwood neighborhood, live off of Mountain Island Lake, they have not had conversations with their current district representative. Or have had reached out to me as well, since I also serve as an at-large member, for meetings where they do not feel that there's a clear understanding of what potentially can be proposed in their area. There's a concern. We all of council received the email both on Saturday and then a follow-up email Sunday that clearly states, dear mayor and members of Charlotte City Council, recommended by my colleague, it is a partial, let's move forward with some, but knowing that there's still conversation. Back to the email, specifically the north inner community area plan. While the plan reflects years of thoughtful work, I am concerned that it continues to preserve too great a concentration of manufacturing and logistics uses in our area already burdened by industrial zoning. Put a pause there because we are having conversations where our wonderful partners in the North Carolina General Assembly are talking about toll roads and we're talking about expansion and we're talking about, ah, the idea or possibility of redlining 2.0. So as we are having conversations on our level regarding potential development and language, there are also conversations that are happening regarding toll roads. We're going to hopefully finalize our appointments for the MPTA. That is also going to have an impact in our community when we look at trains. So we have areas that have already been identified because of us approving so many new multifamily projects on two-lane roads like Mount Holly, Huntersville Road, which manager, you and I, got the wonderful opportunity of spending an hour and a half in during regular traffic, not even during rush hour traffic, to experience just a snap, a snippet of the rezonings that have been approved in that area. I don't see why there's a challenge for us to move forward with some of the projects in areas where we're still not having community outreach to say, hey, we are concerned because what was approved back in the 90s or in 1924? And the way the city has grown today and the lack of infrastructure or road whitens and other things, we just have a couple of more questions. So the idea that is shared, that we should just go ahead and approve all 14 in one swoop and then in less than a year and a half say, oh my goodness, that was an unintended consequence, which there is no such thing, and we have already done that and we've seen how the U D O has played out, we've seen how the 2040 plan has played out. We're seeing how, we're seeing, this is inconsistent, but yet we're going to support it and move forward with it. Slow down. The city's growing. The city is experiencing a lot of growth, which is a great thing for our city. But if we do not grow it in a way that is intentional and that protects as many of our residents, because we are not going to be able to protect all of our residents, but if we are protecting as many of our residents as we possibly can, and that is by them having the opportunity to be a part of this process, then we have an opportunity to see something that can actually be beneficial for multiple parts of the community and not just some parts of the community. And again, as a resident that lives in two, who is constantly receiving not only calls and emails and text messages and when I'm seeing the people at Calabridge Shopping Center, since that is our closest, or the Fordline Shopping Center, and they're having, they ask questions or they say they have not met with their rep because there was a meeting scheduled and that meeting did not happen, then yes, it is then my responsibility to say, yeah, let's slow down a little bit because there's some, there are still some concerns.
What you talking about?
Well, of course you don't.
All right. Next, we'll hear from Ms. Ashmira, follows by Ms. Ashmira. Yes, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I just want to thank the staff for putting together this presentation and providing clear examples. I know that was one of the requests that the council had made last week, so I certainly appreciate this additional work that has gone into this. I also want to thank Councilmember Mayfield. She brought up this idea about phased approach almost six months ago. So to see that now in action, at least it gives the council two options to pick from. Also, I want to thank Dr. Watlington for, for her work to develop this phased approach with staff, with your team specifically, and specifically to address concerns that's been raised by the community and our colleagues. When we, when we are out in the community, we hear two different opinions on community area plans. There are community, communities that are ready to go, but then there are communities that need more work. They feel like we need to do more listening. And I believe this approach gives us an option to incorporate some of the feedback that we have received. I think just a couple of days ago, we received a feedback from North End Partners about balancing our manufacturing with our community activity centers as well as just balancing innovation mixed use with manufacturing. And I think that is a valid concern, especially around community health concerns and just the pollution from manufacturing facilities. So I think if we can somehow find a way to balance that, where we are listening to the community, incorporating their feedback into our overall community area plan, this will give us that additional time. So the example that I'm raising, are you following me, Monica?
Uh huh. Okay, good. I'm aware. Yes.
I think in the time ahead, for a couple of months that we have, I would like us to incorporate that feedback into our community area plan because that is around environmental justice. And I certainly appreciate the work that you and your team has done on Steel Berry Acres. I know we used to hear from that community at least once a month. They used to come out here and talk about just manufact, or industrial facilities too close to their homes. And I think that was a valid concern and I'm glad to see that changes have taken place to address those. So I look, I would like to see additional work being done in next month or two to get us all comfortable with all 14 area plans. And in terms of seven area plans that we have, that is, that was part of the original motion, I have not seen any outstanding issues in the seven that's been moved forward in Councilmember Watlington's motion. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, we don't, we do not see any outstanding concerns in the ones that are listed.
In the seven.
Yes, in these seven, yes.
Yes, and I also feel comfortable moving forward with those seven. But I think there, there needs to be more work done specifically on north inner as well as northeast middle and outer. So if we can be laser focused on those two area plans along with others, where we can incorporate community's feedback in the next three months. I just want us to make sure that next three months are really meaningful time with our community and that we are being intentional. Because what I often hear is that we are growing at fast pace. are growing at fast pace, but that growth is coming at the cost of certain communities. And you want to make sure that as we develop these community area plans and work on it, we want to ensure as much as we can that every resident benefits from the growth. And I'm hoping that in next three months, we can address that balance that's been raised. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Monica, I wanted to ask why these seven that are being deferred, why those were chosen?
Um, we, well, if, if, I don't know if you've seen the PDF where we outlined them, but, uh, we, we heard questions on the 10th from several of you all that hit these geographies. Uh, we also went back and had conversations around the vulnerable to displacement, uh, layer, which that, there's, um, four that are listed out of that seven, so, uh, we pulled those. Uh, we had very few, like, very specific, concrete concerns. I think we've heard a couple more in more recent days around specifically that manufact, manufacturing and logistics and single family, but, um, that, that's really how we pulled those, was the combination of things we heard from the dais and district representatives, council members, uh, and then, uh, some of the questions around common issues with vulnerable to displacement, uh, communities.
So thank you for that thoughtful approach. That's what we've been pushing since September when we initially wanted to defer the vote. So I, I think that's important in knowing why these areas were selected, um, for council. I think it's important that, that we know why. I think what I'd like to see differently the next three months is maybe a baseline for community input. As we know, we've talked about, it's been less than 1%. And so I'd like to see us, us raise that. And like I said last time, we can't blame the public if, if the numbers are that low. We've got to do something differently. So we've talked about plain language, uh, more outreach, maybe more targeted outreach, um, but we can discuss that, but I, I think we have to do something differently or we are going to have the same outcome. So I, I appreciate the more thoughtful approach and making sure we're, that residents feel heard, and not just heard, that their input is being incorporated into these plans, because we do have very active people. There's one sitting behind you. Thank you for coming out, Reverend Garnet Mullins. Um, so we, we want that type of input. There are people that are following these and these, our neighborhoods are being impacted. Folks are being displaced, so this is important for the future of the city. So I look forward to supporting the substitute motion. Thank you.
All right. So I've had an opportunity for the council.
Yeah, I mean, the motion, the original motion. Yes, the original motion.
I would, I would like to have the speakers res, hear what you've said, and I know it's time for us to hear what the speakers want to say. And so Reverend Garnet Mullins, wait, wait, I'm sorry.
No, I just want to put something on the record, um, because I think facts matter. You know, I had several outreach meetings in District Two, specifically Mountain Island Lake, where staff accounted, came with me to talk about these area plans extensively. Uh, I had Zoom meetings with residents in District Two's in general, and specifically Mountain Island Lake, about these plans. I went out there personally and spoke with a wide variety of neighborhood leaders about these plans. Maybe you didn't get that memo either, but I was there, heard their input, I'm voting on their input, but to suggest that somehow I'm not listening, it's just factually incorrect. Thank you for the record.
All right, thank you. Um, so let's hear from Ms. Brown.
Did you want me to wait after the speakers?
Yes, I think if we can do that now.
Yes, ma'am, that'd be fine.
Have our speakers, I think they've been very patient, so let's, so, um, but I have to say this, that I, I'm going to go in the order by which the speakers, um, presented their, um, opportunities. So our first speaker, instead of Ms. Garnet Mullins, will be Tanya Jameson.
Peanut butter.
Is Tom, is she here?
Not here.
No, she's not here. Okay, she's not here. Then our second speaker is Eric Zeverell.
Always good to see you.
That's unusual for me, you know.
Better late than never. All right. Uh, Mayor, City Council, uh, thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight about the community area planes. Uh, my name is Eric Zeverell. I'm speaking on behalf of Sustained Charlotte, supporting the adoption of all the plans together. I'm actually going to change that a little bit. I'm still asking you to all adopt it, but maybe if you have the plans that you defer, get followed up, because what you're going to do is have those areas, those seven areas with no guidance. So any type of development that is occurring, any type of investment that you're going to be dealing with between now and March, you have no tools. So you'd be flying blind. And I'll repeat, it does not change the zoning, as Monica mentioned. That still will be up to you at a rezoning vote. So you don't have to be afraid that you just pass it tonight and it goes on autopilot and no changes could be made. It's a tool for you, it's a tool for staff, to be able to make better informed decisions. So what I would ask and encourage you, please, for predictability, consistency and equity, is to be able to pass all, have a baseline, but then maybe ask staff to come back in March and make any changes that they've learned and continue to reach out to those, those areas that you have concerns about. But if you go tonight leaving them behind, you don't have any guidance. The other areas that have been adopted will have the new policy pieces in place, especially the, uh, environmental justice piece and concerns about manufacturing being close to residential, right? There is pieces put in there as well. Staff, I trust them. I've worked with them since community area planning to Strategic Mobility Plan, the UDO, um, I'm part of the UDO Advisory Committee. I have a master's in urban planning and the planning at the end means that it doesn't end. So a vote tonight doesn't mean that this stops. It continues, it's an action, always going, always improving. So please don't leave those folks behind, but don't stop talking to them. They're not going to, they're not going to stop talking to you. I know that for a fact. Just encourage staff to come back and incorporate those later, but you're going to be moving forward with something other than having nothing. So, um, but if you, you don't, please, if you don't pass them as a complete solution tonight, just provide some kind of clear direction then and figure out some way of being able to have guidance as you move forward in this gap. But all, all else I could say, because I completely improvised all of that, given everything that's just happened, so, um, wish you a happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. All right. Um, now Reverend Janet Garnet Mullins.
Fair enough. I'll take it.
So you have two minutes.
Three minutes.
Three minutes, sorry. I said it was two and it's three.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of City Council and citizens of Charlotte Mecklenburg. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I speak this evening in representation of the West Boulevard Neighborhood Coalition and a daughter of the West Inner, geography bounded by I-85, I-77, Yorkmont Road, Little Rock. We are Wesley Heights, Seersville, Smallwood, Biddleville, Historic West End, and yes, West Boulevard. We're not a blank slate, we are the blueprint. Tonight, I urge you to vote on the CAPS plans individually, not as a bundle decision. These plans will shape the future of our neighborhoods and they deserve thoughtful, transparent review. These plans reflect what we've endured, homes pressed against industries, heat without shade, zoning without protection, and we're asking for protection of single-family neighborhoods' character by disallowing the overabundance of duplexes and triplexes. But it also reflects what we demand, clear land use boundaries, cooling infrastructures and envi, environmental justice, more than just buzzwords. This is not just a CAP update, it's a moral moment. So we don't just ask you to vote, we ask you to remember, policy without people is just paperwork. Planning without legacy is erasure. We're not asking for charity, we're demanding coherence. And when history turns this page, let it say that Charlotte did not bundle its future, but honored its communities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I, I believe, I have a question. I, I mean, Ms., we have a couple of people that have not spoken yet. So we need to do that as well. And so Ms. Brown.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, Ms. Mullins, Reverend Mullins just spoke for me. Mullins spoke for me. On a, um, a more, uh, serious note out of my voice, um, I am going to move to support the original motion for reasons beyond just hearing, um, one of our speakers said that we do the zoning, but how many of our zonings get denied? We approve almost every zoning that come down through City Council, and so that's something for us to look at in the future. Mr. Pompey, thank you for being here, Beanger. We do appreciate and love you as well as Mr. Ricky Hall. And so these are community leaders that come out and really put a blueprint all over the city for the communities that are oppressed, overlooked, marginalized, and, um, I would have to stand in support of whatever they want me to do on this very last council meeting. And I look forward to the new leader coming in and doing just the same. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Brown. Um, so I believe that the next person that I had is Ms. Ashmira.
Yes, so I have a question for Monica and her staff. So I know the motion that's on the floor is to defer seven plans, I'm sorry, adopt the seven plans and defer the other seven till March 23rd, 2026. Is there anything that would prevent your team to use the remaining seven as a framework while we are working on refining that? Because I know the concern here is that you wouldn't have something as a baseline for the remaining seven, but what would prevent you all from using the framework for any project that comes forward?
We, we could provide i, in a rezoning case, and Therese here, so she could potentially answer if need be, but, uh, the adopted policy per state law is what is referenced in a geography. So if the adopted policy we, we have is the 2040, the Charlotte Future 2040, then that is the, um, baseline for consistent or inconsistent. If we have a community area plan, and I'm looking at, if we have a community area plan and a Charlotte Future 2040, then you now have two, you, you can base, um, its consistency on the combination of those two things. So we could give you information if there's not an area plan adopted, but it cannot be used as a legal, um, basis for consistent or inconsistent, in, in my understanding, and if the city attorney wants to further clarify that. It's, it's just, this is land use law, so it's a little different than, than maybe, um, just having it for reference.
So what I hear is, without the adoption by the council, it may not be binding. However, we can still use that as a reference point, like you could provide feedback. Is that correct?
I don't, so, Councilmember Ashmira, the, the land use plan, that would be the point of reference for any geography that does not have an additional layer of the, um, of the additional plan. It would automatically default back to the 2040 plan. Yes, and so the framework, uh, or suggestion, it, there would not be an ability to look at other areas of similar nature. You would have to default back to the 2040 plan.
But let's, so to follow up on that.
Sure.
Madam Attorney, as project comes forward in front of us, could we ask staff specifically to use this as a baseline on a case-by-case basis, um, in the absence of having, in the absence of adopted community area plans?
No, no, Councilmember Ashmira, it would, it would default back to the 2040 plan.
Yeah, cool. Well, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Um, our next, um, opportunity for this is Ed Driggs.
Thank you. And I'd just like to clarify for, for the public that although it is absolutely correct, Ms. Brown, that, uh, the great majority of petitions that come to us are approved, there's a very long road before they get to that point. So I had one, for example, that was controversial, and after a year and a half, the number of units had been reduced by 50%. Uh, and when we see a situation where the approval may not occur, there's a penalty associated with that and those tend to be withdrawn. So we work all this out. It's not like anything that comes in front of us just gets approved, which is the impression that people might get. You're, you're correct that they, that the ones that come up for a vote get approved. I'm just saying, people should not assume that that is kind of random. Uh, and I just wanted to comment too, that, um, uh, I think as currently proposed, the idea that we have one vote on passing seven of them and deferring seven others puts me in a difficult position, because I would like to affirm the passage of some, and I don't agree with the deferral of the others. And that's why I'm recommending that at a minimum, we break out the ones that are recommended for action and vote on them. And then I think we ought to be a little more intentional and take the other ones one at a time, because the conditions in each of these geographies are different. The reasons for deferring them aren't the same everywhere. And therefore, I would hope that the district reps or whatever, on a case-to-case basis, would then advise us and that we would make more differentiated choices around the seven, because there is a cost associated with deferring these. And, uh, uh, I think that's, in my mind, a serious issue, so I want to be sure we're thoughtful. Doesn't exclude the outcome that, that all of them get deferred in the end, but in light, for example, of Mr. Graham's comments, I think that we should be, we should pay a little more detail, and, and also frankly, based on what we just heard, I think that we should not kind of conduct this business on a wholesale basis, except where we've reached a point after seven months that seven of them appear to be ready to go. So I'm, I'm going to make a, a substitute motion that we separate the vote, that we consider the ones that are, uh, recommended for approval in one action, and that we consider the ones that are recommended for deferral individually.
All right.
I'll second that motion.
We have a second to that motion.
Point of order, just so I'm clear. The nature of my motion wasn't approving or deferring. I think the nature of Councilmember Driggs' motion is about the process. I don't know if that's a substitute motion to the motion that I made, or if it's something that would be considered separately, because they're, they're not the same type of motion.
What is your motion? Could you repeat it?
Yes, here you go.
Right, so you're moving to adopt or defer, and I'm saying I don't want to make that decision in one vote.
Right, I understand.
I'd rather make it in separate votes.
Understand, but your, your motion is about the way we vote, not whether or not we approve the, the particular plans.
If you're going to be the parliamentarian, you tell me how to accomplish what I'm trying to do.
Well, I just asked the city attorney, I wasn't actually talking to you. So if you could continue.
Um, yes, Dr. Watlington, so the, the motion as it stands.
Out of control tonight.
You're correct. It would be, it would be a whole motion, together with the motion to approve and to defer. To bifurcate it would, would substantively change the nature of the motion, and so a substitute motion would be in order, if, if there is a desire to break the two up. Does that answer my question?
I'm not sure that I could hear you, so can you do this one more time, Madam?
Yes, Madam Mayor. So the, the motion on the floor combines the motion to adopt and to defer. To separate the motions would be a substantive change to the current motion, and so if, if there's a desire by Councilmember Driggs to bifurcate those two, it would require a substitute, substitute motion.
Which is what I made.
Yeah, I just wanted to know if those, because my motion was about approving and deferring, and his was about whether or not we use this process or if we separate it. Like, if he had said, I, I move that we approve these seven and defer only this one, then I could see that being a substitute.
That is what I said.
Excuse me, but what I'm asking. Excuse me, but what I'm asking is, his question was, what I heard his motion to be was not about which ones we approve or defer, it was about whether or not we could split them up as a motion in general, and whether council wanted to do that, as he mentioned before, separate and apart from what the actual approval or deferral outcome would be. So I just wanted to be sure that those two could be connected. Understood.
All right, I think we're clear on that issue right now.
We are.
Okay.
So are we clear, just Madam Mayor, that the substitute motion and the second is now what we're discussing?
Correct.
Currently, that's where the discussion is sitting.
May I repeat, the substitute motion is that we approve the ones recommended for approval with this motion, and that we separate the ones for separate action that are on the deferred list.
All right. We have a motion for that. Is there, and I think Mr. Peacock's second. And so now we're open the floor for the discussion. Ready to vote? Okay, so if we have no further discussion, we have a substitute motion on the floor, and that motion should be followed as our first vote. And so with that, all in favor of the motion made by Mr. Driggs, please raise your, second by Mr. Peacock, please raise your hands.
Figures.
One, two, three, four. We have four, so the motion does not carry. Thank you. All right, what's our, what is the council's plan for the next step?
We have the original motion.
The original motion?
Yes, so if we can go through that original motion, Ms. Johnson asked to be recognized. Ms. Johnson?
I just wanted it to be clear that if we don't vote on these last seven that we're deferring, then there is a plan. We can't say that we're going to operate blindly. It's the way we're operating through right now. So, and that's following the 2040 plan. So if we defer it for 90 days, I don't want the talking point or the soundbite to be that we're harming these neighborhoods where we're not adopting the plans. There's more harm, in my opinion, to move forward than there is to take a more thoughtful approach. So I don't want the talking point or the soundbite to be that there's some inequitable harm, and they're left behind, because that's not what we're doing. We're trying to include them and include their voices. I think that's very clear for the record. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Mayfield, and then we'll go for the motion.
So question for clarification, because for the last one, you identified if anyone supported, but what I did not hear is for, to close out the vote. Anyone opposed? So we did not raise our hands on that. We counted four, and we just moved forward. Do we not need to have yays and nays?
Well, we certainly can, but it would take six people to do the vote, and I think that I was just trying to make sure that that happened.
And I was, and I appreciate that, Mayor, so I was just clarifying for the clerk's office, that since there was only four, then it was, it automatically doesn't move forward. But did we need to have those in opposition on record for your records?
But we have a.
Because we like to ask you for records. And want information back from you, so I just want to make sure for your office that you have what you need.
We can certainly ask.
Need us to be on?
Ms. Mayfield, thank you. You're really helping me tonight, after a rather long day, so let's, all of those, when we had the motion for those, so there were people, if you decided not to support the substitute motion, please raise your hand if you have.
Any opposed?
Any opposed, right.
For the substitute motion? For the substitute.
Yeah, substitute motion.
Oh, yeah.
One, two, three, four, five, six. All right.
Six, seven, four.
Thank you. Thanks very much, Ms. Mayfield, always following and helping me out. Okay.
So now we go back to the original motion?
We go back to, right.
Time to vote.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, so I guess we just called the question.
I had a comment.
Ms.
Smoking on this matter.
Okay, that is true. You have not.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My, so my question, and I'm not sure, Madam Attorney, so our, the motion is that we pass these seven that are in front of us, and there's a deferral until the end of March. Because there is a deferral specifically for these seven, that precludes us from having any of those seven come back before us, before the end of March, without taking a series of votes, right? Because what I'm trying to get to is, we heard Councilmember Graham speak about some of the area plans in his district. If, let's just say, for example, just as an example, if West Inner is ready to, if the community feels like they're ready to move forward, perhaps at the end of January or beginning of February, what would preclude us from taking an action to vote to approve that particular area plan before the end of March? That's what I'm trying to get to.
Staff could bring it back before you, any of the seven that you would be moving to defer, and essentially, council would just reverse its current action and decide to act earlier than March 23rd, provided that you had these sufficient votes to move forward. One could say no later, no later, instead of until, it could be no later than. That's an option as well, but again, staff could bring it back for your consideration before that time, and you would just simply vote to move forward on those plans.
Okay. And perhaps, motion maker, if we could make a friendly amendment to say no later than March 23rd?
I'll accept.
Okay. And as a second on that motion, I'll second that. You know, my concern is, and certainly I want us to move forward. I know you guys have done a tremendous amount of work. There's been a tremendous amount of community engagement, absolutely within District 1. My concern is, you know, the entire west side and effectively the entire north side does not have an area plan that's moving forward at all. And I feel that that presents some potential inequities, especially as we move forward with three additional zoning meetings in between now and March 23rd. You know, that's a lot of decisions and a lot of discussions that won't be framed the same way as other parts of our city, which is a concern that I brought up, I believe, a couple of meetings ago. And we talk a lot here about unintended consequences, whether they, whether they're missed, whether they're not missed. I don't know if we've figured that out, but I do believe that this could potentially bring some challenges to those areas, specifically on the west side and the north side, that are not included at all. And the work that's been done over the last several months are, will not be included in those decisions over the next three, four, really, zoning meetings that will occur in December, January, February, March. So that's, that's my concern. I voiced that before. I am, I do want some of these area plans to move on because they are ready, and I would like to see them have that level of protection and that level of perspective as we make these land use decisions. But that's just a looming concern that I do have, and I think it's a real concern, and we just need to be mindful of that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mayfield.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As we're trying to work through transparency on this, I do not discount the work the staff has done, even though I have asked us to break this up. When we look at what staff presented to us regarding the community area plans and the breakdown, since we're going to talk about the West Inner of which, the income median household range in the West Inner geography is between $17,685 and $80,714, while the citywide range is $18,897 up to $250,001. So to give the impression that, well, we don't want to move too fast in these areas that have been identified for defer, we have to acknowledge and recognize that as a elected body, not just this body, for many years and generations of bodies, that areas of our community have not had the investment, the education, or the alignment the other areas have. So in the recommendation that Dr. Watlington has identified for tonight under approved as well as defer, you see areas that have had a greater opportunity over generations. We have areas in our city that look exactly the same as they did 45, 50 years ago. So to say, well, we need to hurry up and we need to approve this plan for all, because they're not going to get any work done in this area if we don't have a plan approved. Okay, well, let's stop lying, because they ain't getting any work done in the last 35 years anyway. So how about we take the time and do it right, and actually hear from the people, the small businesses, the community that are being displaced, that are being pushed out, that are saying that their voices are not being heard, because we're looking at one segment of this neighborhood and not three streets over, where they're still having challenges? Because we can drive through the city and have one street that has seen robust investment and literally go a block and a half, two blocks, or two streets over, and it is a completely different story. But this area plan is an overlay of the whole area, so you're not having a real, you're not having an apples-to-apples conversation. So in our language, if we identify that we have a segment of our community where the highest range of that income is $80,000 and some change, while the citywide range is over $250,000, but we know in this city today, in order to possibly identify housing, whether it's rental or not, you need to be earning $24 plus an hour, well, we don't get to mandate that for our businesses. But what we can do is, to the best of our ability, ensure that we're having transparent conversations. We cannot have that transparent conversation if we are not going to acknowledge the opportunities that we have not taken advantage of throughout the years. We are either going to learn from the lessons, most recent lessons of unintended consequences, not a real thing, or we're going to say, you know what, we're going to continue doing what we've always been doing, because that's easier, because I really don't want to do the work. So let's just go ahead and do this, and we'll run into any challenges later, and we'll try to go back and fix it. Versus slowing down and less reduce or mitigate the unintended consequences on the front end. So I want us to be very transparent, because everyone in the community isn't necessarily reading and looking at this community area plan that we all have. Now, we can gladly, I would gladly start just shooting all, y'all through Facebook, Instagram, or whatever way you want, all the information that we receive, so that you can start looking through it for yourselves. But ultimately, we're the ones that's elected to do the work and try to dig in and ask the questions. But when we have community members that not only show up to share their concerns, but email us, email us as a council, and email us individually with the exact same comments that they had eight months ago, that means someone, someone's not listening, or we're listening, but your voice isn't powerful enough for us to move forward.
Thank you, Ms. Mayfield. Now, I believe that we have a ready to vote. We have an item with us. Madam Clerk, can you read again what the recommended, what the motion was?
I can, if you want.
All right, Ms. Watlington, would you please?
I move to adopt the following community area plans with the proposed changes. A, E, G, H, I, J, K. Again, that's A, East Inner, E, Northeast Inner, G, South Inner, H, South Middle, I, South Outer, J, Southwest Middle, K, Southwest Outer, and to defer action on the following community area plans. B, C, D, F, L, M, N, until no later than March 23rd, 2026 council meeting. Again, that's B, East Middle and Outer, C, North Inner, D, North Middle and Outer, F, Northeast Middle and Outer, L, West Inner, M, West Middle, and N, West Outer.
Thank you. Ms. Brown, I slipped over and did not recognize you, and I think that you wanted to make a statement.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's okay. We're a piece of work tonight, so I get it. I understand. Totally.
It's been a job.
Yes, ma'am. I appreciate you very much. So I really want to say, we really do need to look at, there's a lot of people watching, and I know Mr. Driggs, you know, you like to go below the belt sometimes, so, you know, I don't play them. Anyway, deception is everything. You say we work hard to get the zoning approved. That is true. Now, you should have known that I was going to address that. At the end of the day, it doesn't matter how hard we work. People do not care what we know unless they know we care. That's important, okay? That's number one. Number two, there is nothing wrong with taking our time, we've got a lot of time with this new council coming in. They worked, they won the election so they can do the work that's like all of us have done the work up here. We have to make sure that we're reaching every person we need to reach by all means necessary. And can each one of us up here collectively and individually say we've done that? I haven't. I'm a truth teller. There's more work to be done, because there's 150,000-plus people in my district. There's no way I can reach all of them. But I got amazing leaders that are out here representing, that are willing to show up to make sure that their voice can be echoed in the places that I might not be able to reach. And that's a real statement that can't be take, or can't be taken from me or retracted. That's it, with a period, not a comma. And so at the end of the day, I want to vote to delay it and slow while I'm in this seat to do what we need to do for the entire community, not just parts of the city. Some parts are flourishing and growing, some left behind, need more work, and that's where I'm at, as a District 3 representative that was selected by all of District 3 for 2023 to 2025. That's where I'm at.
Fair enough.
Okay?
Thank you. All right, so I believe that we have the motion on the floor. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Everyone, do you know? That's, that's. Any opposed? Mr. Graham is in opposition. Thank you very much. Good work, guys.
It's hard work.
The next thing that I want to say is we.
Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, if I may, Dr. Watlington. Dr. Watlington, I just wanted to verify, was there another motion that you were intending to confirm?
No, I'm good, and I can bring this to you if you like.
You need.
See there, A and B.
Monica's singing something. No, we need the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We need the motion, too.
Yes.
I can have two.
Here I have. So Monica, do you need anything else?
Yes.
Yes, there's one more motion, just to make sure we're all.
Yeah.
Apologies. Thank you for that. Yep, I've got another motion. Any reads? I move to adopt the revised policy map to include the community area plans that were approved tonight.
Second.
And those were, thank you, Mr. Driggs, those were A, E, G, H, I, J, and K.
Second. There's a motion, I think that we already had a second. All, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Please raise your hand. Okay. All, anyone in opposition? None noted, so thank you very much. All right, so the next item on our agenda.
May I move for approval?
That was unanimous, right? Everybody voted, yes?
I'm sorry.
Everybody voted, yes?
Yes.
May I move approval actions, A and B?
All right, we're, we're on the bridges. Item 11. Let's go to item 11.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Anyone opposed? Anyone opposed? I want to make sure. All right, the next item is item 12, is there a motion to approve a contract with Motorola Solutions to provide implement and maintain drones and related systems for the. I'm sorry.
Mayor, I understand that there are speakers.
There were speakers that we never heard from on the.
Yes, thank you. When, when we were having the public speaking time, we missed a person who has been sitting here and watching us the entire time, so I, we want to, we want to repair that, so thank you. You would, if you would be able to come to the podium. So thank you, you would, if you would be able to come to the podium.
Okay. Thank you.
You have a ten, two minutes, okay. If you would give us your name so that we can make sure that we all understand who you are.
Good evening, my name is Donna Eliza Schmidt. I live at ninety-two-hundred University City Boulevard. I'm a twenty-year-old education major at UNC Charlotte and teach beginner English as a second language classes to adults in this city. I've been working with my students for over four months and have gotten to know them extremely well. They are kind, hardworking, funny people who pay out of their own pocket to come to my English classes after long shifts to learn to talk to their neighbors and give, and better give back to the community they call home. On Wednesday, November twelfth, it was announced that immigration enforcement would come to our city. That evening and the following day, only two of my students showed up. That Saturday, immigration enforcement parked their unmarked vans directly in front of my school. Since then, due to the frequent reports of immigration officers stopping and arresting people solely based on their appearance and repeatedly violating their rights, my students have been scared to leave their house, saying they feel like they're living in a horror movie. They don't feel safe going to the English classes they worked so hard for, going to jobs that feed their families and pay taxes, buying groceries, or taking their kids to school. These places are not where you find the worst of the worst criminals that the officers claimed they came to Charlotte for. Yet they know if they leave their house, they will be treated like criminals, which breaks my heart. I also have a lot of Latino friends who have student visas or are citizens. They've also been afraid to leave their home due to cases of racial profiling such as VDSA tunos who was a citizen. Additionally, the public, school I intern at, is missing seats where my Latino students usually sit. The violation of constitutional rights, including unnecessary violence and dehumanizing manners of immigration officers towards this targeted group of people, is causing them to hide at their homes. I urge this council to let communities know that we support our neighbors by releasing a statement in Spanish and English condoning the fear and havoc masked federal officers have wrought on our city. I also propose providing know-your-rights materials on the council's website, accompanying other community resources to create a safe Charlotte. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our apologies for not getting you, it was rather a lot of things going on. So if you want to join the city council anytime, I'm sure there's another time that you can come and express your concerns, and we will get you. Thank you so very much. Okay. So now, we're going to move to the business section of our agenda. Item twelve, is there a motion to approve a contract with Motorola Solutions, Inc., to provide implement and maintain drones and related systems for the drones as first responder programmed for a term of five years, authorizing the manager to renew the contractor up to one five-year term with possible price adjustments, authorizing the man, city manager to negotiate and execute and purchase such additional software licenses, services, and those et cetera items required to maintain the system as long as the city is using the system. So with that, we have a motion.
May I make a motion? I make a motion to accept items A, B, C, D, and E.
Second. All right, we have a motion on A, B, C, and D for the business section of our agenda. Um, I just want to make...
Madam, what number are we on? Number twelve.
Twelve.
Thank you.
Item twelve. So we have a motion on the floor, on the dais. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hands. Anyone opposed? All right, two, three, two opposed, so that passes. Thank you very much. All right, the next item is, that includes the accepting of the funding as well. The next item is item thirteen, which is register nomination grants for McCrory Heights and Oaklawn Park. Sean Langley? Where are you, Sean? Oh, there you are. Don't look here, that's the second person. Sorry.
We did, we did.
Good to see you, but that was too fast. So is there, let me start with the motion as well as your, after you... We have a motion to accept a grant in the amount of twenty-one-thousand-five-hundred from the U.S. Department of Interior for national register nominations for McCrory Heights and Oaklawn Park. And Sean, please.
Thank you. So just wanted to briefly thank you all for being here and also for hearing about why we want McCrory Heights to be recognized as on the National Historic Registry, as well as Oaklawn Park. McCrory Heights is one of the most iconic historically black neighborhoods in all of America. Every single home has a storied history. McCrory Heights was home to educators, including five college presidents, civil rights lawyers, medical doctors, theologians, that all collectively worked to dismantle the walls of segregation in public spaces here in Charlotte. Notable women like Miss Dorothy Count Scoggins, family lived in McCrory Heights and one is, and was one of the first African-Americans to integrate in all-white Charlotte Mecklenburg school system. She endured racial harassment. Prolific writer James Baldwin was so moved by her activism and courage, he left Europe and fled back to the United States to write about the plight of African-Americans. That is just one example among many. While these people and countless others made significant strides in their own respective way, they were all part of the McCrory Heights community. Their advancements were part of a larger cause that took place in these modest, uniquely-designed mid-century homes. This neighborhood's significance is attributable to people and places, which is why so many residents are advocating for the national designation. But our historic neighborhood has faced adversity and has threatened our livelihood in the past as well as in the present. Currently, NC DOT is planning to expand toll lanes on I-77, which would encroach in on our community. Plan A, brought forth by NCT, NC DOT, would see six homes in our neighborhood and over eighty homes along this eleven-mile stretch. Plan B, an elevated highway, also referred to as an adequate double-decker highway, would als, would also do unjust harm to our neighborhood. They would, but other progressive cities have looked and done research on this and have found other equitable ways to do this without causing unnecessary harm. So both plans presented do not align with our neighborhood, do not align with the residents that live up and down this eleven-mile stretch. But they also don't align with your Strategic Energy Action Plan, which causes to reduce greenhouse gases by seventy-two percent by 2035. So both options destroy our quality of life, they decrease our property value, and cause unnecessary harm to Oaklawn Park, to McCrory Heights, to Wesley Heights, to West Boulevard, to Clanton Park, to Nations Ford, and countless other neighborhoods. So if this body is really serious about helping us become on the National Historic Designation, we also can't also have at the same time NC DOT unjustly causing harm to our neighborhood. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. I believe you've had a number of meetings.
We have.
You're going to continue to have those meetings, and we are going to work with you as much as we can.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item that we have... Oh, we have to vote? We have, I'm sorry, Ms. Johnson, you want to state?
Yeah, I did have a question. So will this national registry nomination or any type of designation prevent? In the domain, or, okay, all right, okay. This is one thing of the state, transportation people. I was asking the mayor, unless you know, have a different answer.
So it does provide us with certain statutes and laws that make it harder for NC DOT to demolish homes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the next item that we have, oh, we got a vote, oh my gosh. Okay, all in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Okay, so we're good on that one. So the next item is item fifteen, a motion to pro, adopt the... Fourteen, is a motion to approve twenty-five million dollars in capital improvements for the NASCAR Hall of Fame, approve the inter-local agreement to reimburse the Charlotte Regional Visitors Authority for an amount up to one-point-three million for the NASCAR Hall of Fame design, development, and phase costs, adopt a budget ordinance appropriating the same amount, and proceeds for the...
A, B, and C.
We have a motion to approve A, B, and C, and a second. Is there any discussion, Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to inform the public and the council that this item has gone through the Economic Development Committee at least on two occasions. I think it came out with a five-o vote. This will be the first time that there'll be any major improvement or enhancement to the NASCAR Hall of Fame since its opening. Obviously, there is much work that needs to be done. There are representatives from the Hall of Fame and the CRVA with us tonight. I urge approval. Thank you.
All right, Mr. De, Driggs?
So I agree, and just want to mention that I had some conversations, Steve, and good evening to you, and basically satisfied myself that the cash flows that are projected can service this debt, because I think that's something from the past that we want to be comfortable with, and I'm satisfied that we do have the capacity, and therefore I will join Mr. Graham in supporting this.
Thank you. Ms. Mayfield, did you have your comment, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. So I have had the pleasure to serve on the NASCAR Hall of Fame Board for seven-plus years at this point, and what I can share, which it is evident in the proposal, but the board has been very fiscally conservative for a number of years, and with this particular request of improvement, knowing that these come for a capital improvement and that those dollars had already been identified through our current source, I completely support us moving forward, but I do want to make sure that full council and community are aware that the NASCAR Hall of Fame has been extremely conservative at the same time motel and motel night stays that have increased. But for me, something that's extremely important is the number of youth engagement events that have been created through this board over the last five to seven years that directly outreach to young women as well as young men to be engaged and not only learn about NASCAR, but learn the business of NASCAR and what that has opened. So I just wanted to share for those, please take the time, go to the NASCAR Hall of Fame website, all of the information is available. Tune in because the fiscal responsibility, because I've had this, the opportunity this last term to serve alongside of my colleague, Councilmember Brown, to be a part of the meetings and to share and show, see how we show up in community and throughout diverse community, because we are NASCAR for all. So when we think about the work that we have done together, I am proud to support this recommendation this evening. Mayor.
All right, Ms. Brown?
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. Thank you for appointing me to that board, to sit alongside Councilmember Mayfield. I learned a lot. They got a lot of outfits in, out there in the, the foyer area that I like to wear. Could I get some of the things out of the cages? But on a more serious note, what Councilmember Mayfield said, I learned so much about the NASCAR Hall of Fame and what they do and how they give back and they pour into the community, so it's been amazing to sit on the board and to learn about the great works that they do and how they dwindle their funds down into the community to people that look like me, and that matters to me. And so I'm, I'm happy that I was able to serve on that board and see how they poured into our youth and to make the community a better place for all people, like Councilmember Mayfield said. So of course, it's a pleasure not only to sit on the board, but to see the work that they do, the time that they put in, the commitment that they've made, and just to see the outreach. And so I support this for the reasons that I stated.
Well, thank you so much, Ms. Brown. And thank you, we see the folks up in the, I can't even see it all. We're glad to have you guys. Thank you so much for the work that you've done. So let's go to our vote.
Got to vote.
Let's go ahead and vote. All in favor of the motion to approve, say, is there anyone in opposition? No, Ms. Johnson, you in opposition?
Put your hand down, girl.
Thank you for that.
Let's go District One.
All right, so the next, the next item is six, item sixteen, remaining appointments to the Metropolitan Public Transportation Authority Board, and tonight, the city council will make the city's remaining three appointments to the Metropolitan Transportation Board as well as appointments for the Business Advisory Committee. And I'm going to recognize Mr. Mitchell.
Mayor, council, thank you so much, and for the public out there, thank you for your patience you allow us to complete a very important process, and to the city council team for reading a hundred-and-forty-five applicants, then interviewing twenty-seven applicants. And on last Monday, we approved four, so tonight, we have three that we need to appoint for tolls seven. So I'm going to ask Ms. Stephanie Kelly, can you read off the nominations to us, please?
Yes, sir, these are your votes. After ballots were submitted this afternoon, Katrina Young has been appointed. And the, there is a need for a raise of hands on the following three who received five votes, votes each. Emma Allen, William Cameron Pruitt, and Corinne Mack.
I make a motion to appoint Emma Allen.
Second. All right, there was, I heard a motion for appointing Emma Allen. And...
Second by?
Was second by? Ms. Johnson, okay. All right, any other nominees?
I make a motion to support Corinne Mack.
Second.
We have Corinne Mack. And that is Mr. Graham.
Second by Councilmember Brown.
And Ms. Brown.
Madam Mayor, make a po, a motion to support Mr. Pruitt.
Second.
Mr. Pruitt. All right, we have a second on that as well.
Yes.
All right, is there any other nomination, Madam Clerk? The three that we have, so it's, um, yes.
Just for clarif, question for clarification?
Yes.
We couldn't have moved those three by acclamation?
No, they didn't get six.
They didn't get six.
They all got six. Y'all got five.
Fine, y'all got five, right.
Oh, Katrina's on, so there's still, still two seats. But we just nominated three.
Yeah, I'm confused, I've never done it.
So we have, um, three?
We had two seats left, just for clarification. I apologize because I had stepped away when Clerk Kelly was calling out. So we have one person that received six, so was there a motion for them to be approved by acclamation?
What the process is, they are automatically appointed upon six votes.
Okay, so we still have two seats. But we just received three nominations.
Correct.
I just wanted to clarify, thank you.
All right, okay. So with that, um...
And the names were Emma Allen, Corinne Mack, and Cameron Pruitt.
All right.
So we need to vote again now?
Yes, by show of hands.
By show of hands. All right, so I don't know, Madam Clerk, you putting this together for the last six weeks or so? So let's see, how do we do this with, we have Ms. Mack, we have Mr. Pruitt, and Ms. Johnson, I mean, no, stop, Ms.
Yeah, that's right.
And so we do that by raise of hands.
Correct.
And each one in what order?
We can start...
Alphabetical, Ms. Allen.
Alphabetical, okay. Emma Allen, all those voting for Emma Allen, and you were gonna...
Raise your hand.
Raise your hand. So we have one, two, three, four, five. Next, um, person would be Corinne Mack. All in favor, Corinne Mack? We have one, two, three, count that one. Oh, I didn't see you, Ms. Brown. Let's see, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, that's what we have.
Any opposed?
Any opposed? No, we don't have any opposition, so we're just going to go with, and she, and we have one more.
One seat left.
Cameron Pruitt. All in favor? I believe that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. I think that that also...
Can we see show of hands again? That wasn't eight, I don't think.
Esmer, one, two, Ms. Johnson?
No, I didn't.
Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six... Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Seven.
Seven instead of eight. All right, seven. Is that eight?
Yes.
All right, we now have eight. All right, so, we have, um, this has been a great effort. And I really want to say to the council members, thank you so much for the time and what you've taken with us. Mr. Graham and Ms. Driggs, next.
He was first. He went first.
So, since we have one appointment still outstanding, I believe, right? Not having gotten all three?
No, we just did. We just appointed two.
We only got to five.
No. We just appoint, we got a full seven now.
All right, so, we're done. I missed a hand somewhere in there.
Okay, Mr. Graham.
Yeah, thank you. First, I want to take the opportunity, really, to thank Councilmember Mitchell for his leadership and over the last several weeks in terms of really pulling us together and kind of leading the charge, as well as the committee. So, I first want to acknowledge that. And then, secondly, I just wanted to reiterate the importance of tonight's action. As I said before, the PAVE Act is not perfect. We anticipated that this thing would be passed in the fall of twenty-four, not June of this year. And that means we have a whole lot of work to be done in a short period of time. I really want to thank, you know, Frank Emery, Todd Collins, David Hollid, Jocelyn Noli, the Mayor's appointment, Mr. Bowman and Long, the Alliance appointment, Dixon and Griffin, and the Foundation appointment. Peter Paffes, which makes up the twelve members of the Authority from the city's perspective. I've said all along, at least what was important to me is that the individuals that we select represent the interests of the city of Charlotte, that they represent the interests of the riders, that we elect leaders that can lead on day one, that they can lead a major subcommittee of the Authority, they can lead the Authority itself, right? That they have the time, commitment to do the work, because it's going to be a lot of work right up front that they would have to do. That they support displacement policies and funding and obviously, small business utilization and minority business development. I think it's a reset, from my perspective, because, again, these twelve individuals now lead our, have our interests in terms of shaping of the region from a transportation perspective, moving forward, shaping priorities, policies, strategies. And when you add the appointments that Mecklenburg County will make, then we'll have our full allotment of twenty-seven members, which is going to be extremely critical. I just hope that they all get off to the first, to a fresh start, Mr. Manager. And that, you know, I guess my first question is, how would they be orientated and informed that they were selected by the city? And now that we joined this big Board, how does that process work, Mr. Manager?
Well, thank you, Mr. Graham. I think now that you've made the appointments, it would be great that there's some kind of welcome letter.
Send a formal appointment letter that says that the council has appointed you and who to contact and who they should expect to hear from for further information about moving forward. On your behalf, we send a letter informing them of your appointment.
And they will be contacting the city of Charlotte for next steps in terms of what they do, how they do it, how they begin to be orientated?
Well, I will tell you, and kudos to the team. What we are prepared to do is much like what Aunt McKinney has been doing for a while, and Brent Cagle, is to provide a packet for everybody in terms of some of the documents, you know, the PAVE Act, but as well as some of the different things that we have been putting out in the community so that they understand some of the, best way to say it, some of the ways that this was proposed to the residents of Mecklenburg County and some of the discussions that occurred over the course of this entire campaign.
And at that first meeting, they're expected to get studies? So, what is the city doing to kind of get things moving in the right direction?
Yeah, so, I guess earlier this fall, the MTC approved up to a half million dollars for a series of studies that had to occur, according to the PAVE Act, of five different studies. And if needed, a sixth study. And what has been occurring since that approval is the different entities that are working on the studies to so, to make sure that this is feasible. So, those studies will be delivered to the Authority and the Authority eventually, they're the Authority's studies, okay? And I see Larry up there, so I'll make sure I get this right. They're the Authority's studies. And those studies need to be presented to the General Assembly, I believe, by January first.
Okay. And all appointees are, have equal fitting to get things started with all the other appointees, whether it's state appointments, city appointments, county appointments, everyone leaves the starting gate together?
Yes. I'm just saying that the appointments have been staggered. So, like even the county won't make their appointments until-
No, no, I'm talking about in terms of once the body is seated, they all kind of ready, set, go together in terms of collecting, identifying priorities, identifying leadership. None of that stuff has been predetermined.
Not that I'm aware of, no.
I believe Mr. Mitchell wanted to have a comment. And so do you.
No, I'm sorry. Councilman Graham was finished. Mayor, council, I was going to say, it's a big thank you to two people, but four people. First, Councilmember Mayfield and Councilmember Driggs for putting up twenty hours and all the meetings and putting up with me being hyper. Thank you all for your patience. And, but I think we had an outstanding process. And secondly, with Liz Bassin, please stand up.
Yeah.
Liz. You're going to have withdrawal symptoms now, because we're not going to talk Saturday and Sunday. But City Manager, I can't tell you how much Liz was just making sure that every meeting, we were thorough, we were precise, and we want to make sure that we had a process that had a lot of integrity. So, Liz, thank you so much for all what you've done to make sure this day could happen.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Ms. Mayfield had her head up. Ms. Mayfield? Mr. Driggs? Ms. Mayfield?
Sorry, sorry, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Also, I would like to thank Liz. And it was a pleasure serving alone, Councilmember Mitchell, as well as Councilmember Driggs, with this AHA committee. But I do also want to make sure that community understands that when the three of us got together and working with staff, bless you, once council helped to identify the twenty-seven members, that was seventeen hours of interviews. In those seventeen hours of interviews, the scoring process was zero to one. Zero being does not address the question, because we asked each five questions. One minimally addresses the question. Two adequately addresses the question. Or three, fully and effectively address the question. Now, the three of us then said that we will make a recommendation of seven individuals. Yet, we recognize that it is up to full council to then choose the person of their choice. My challenge is, after twenty-plus hours of our time to create this process and to create a scoring system, for us to have the max you can receive was a forty-five. So, five questions, up to three points each, max fifteen, times three, that gets to the forty-five. We had a total of six individuals that actually scored a forty-five. We made our recommendation. Then, it was not our understanding or my understanding that, you know what, the categories aren't as important. So, we worked to try to identify individuals based on their scoring and the categories. Yet, tonight, we had individuals that scored a forty. We had individuals that scored in the high thirties. And we just appointed an individual that scored a twenty-two. So, I don't really understand why. We went through the process of interviewing, seven, seventeen-plus hours of time of going through a scoring mechanism based off of the questions that our colleagues presented. Twenty-two of them for us to break down, five each. We would never have this opportunity again for the beginning of this creation, even though these will be two- to four-year terms. I hope prior, for whatever future council gets to appoint the next round of people, that a process is put in place on the front end that clearly identifies, one, is it categories that we want to ensure that we have representation? Meaning, we want people to actually have experience in finance, engineering, public transportation, economic development, urban planning, logistics, or not. And if there's going to be another interview process moving forward, if there's going to be a scoring mechanism, then either stick to the scoring mechanism or don't have it. Because this information, the score should be already available to the public. But if not, it will be posted on my social media now that we've gotten through all of this. Because we talk about, we want transparency. But we had individuals that scored a nine, as well as had individuals that scored a forty-three, a forty-one, a forty. And we all had access to that information. So, if we're going to talk about creating a Board that within a short amount of time will be overseeing more than thirty million dollars. Infrastructure investment that not only impacts the city of Charlotte, but also impacts the region that's going to help determine where small businesses may or may not grow, may or may not be displaced. And if that choice is going to be made off of relationship versus quality of work and possible contribution to this Board, that's something that really needs to be taken into consideration. And it's the repeat of the financial partners' conversation all over again from this summer, where I said, why are we making people go through hoops to fill out applications if only thing we're going to do is appoint our friends? There's a challenge in that model. Yet, I am proud of the fact that we did create a scoring and for the choices that I had tonight, since we only had choices of those who received two or more votes to try to get to a consensus. I am proud of the fact that I stepped to my thirty-and-above scoring to ensure at least the integrity of the process that the three of us committed twenty-plus hours to was upheld. Thank you.
All right, Dimple Ashmira.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Mitchell, Mayfield, and Driggs for putting in a lot of work. I probably called James at least six times, because we were having technical difficulties. And he was up till midnight trying to get, make sure everyone submitted their twenty-seven names. So, James, thank you for being accessible, making sure that everyone submitted their ballots and their twenty-seven names by the deadline. And also, I want to thank Madam Clerk. I know she was on the phone with us.
That's right.
She's worked over the weekends. She has been available late nights. And we couldn't have done this without her team's support throughout this. So, thank you, Ms. Kelly, and your entire team. And I know that Mr. Driggs and Ms. Mayfield, as well as Mr. Mitchell, you put in a lot of time going through all the interviews, asking questions, and taking in questions from each council member that were surveyed. We certainly appreciate it. And I'm excited about this Transit Authority appointments. This will be a transformational investment for our community. And I can't wait to see the results of it. So, looking forward to that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Now, we also had Mr. Driggs.
Thank you, Mayor. So, as the Chair of Transportation, Planning, and Development, I'd just like to note, this is another milestone. We had the passage of the legislation. We had the referendum pass, and now we have a Board. And it's one step at a time. I actually enjoyed my work in the Steering Committee. And Mr. Mitchell, I have to take my hat off to you. I think your leadership was extraordinary, and you navigated us through something that could have been a lot harder. So, I do appreciate that. We need to understand, we traveled a long road to get here. And this goes back years, depending on when you want to actually identify the origins of it. And then, there was, as you recall, engagement with the towns. They didn't want to play unless we had guarantees about the red line. The manager went out and spent seventy-four million dollars and bought the red line, okay? And that was critical. And throughout this process, there were people working on this thing, working to make it happen. I had the opportunity to see a lot of them work on it. And I think we owe a special debt to them. I don't want to start naming names, but I can tell you, there are at least ten people without whom, any one of whom, we would not be here. So, as I look ahead, what I'm seeing is a, is a very tricky process. So, we're in uncharted waters here. And we have a lot of constituencies, and they have different concerns. And we're going to have to kind of collaborate in order to achieve all of the intended purposes of this. As it stands right now, we have the prospect of the Authority being the entity that decides. One thing I can tell you for sure is, nothing is going to happen that has any force with the Authority without a majority vote of the Authority. There will be no officer appointments. There's going to be no adoption of bylaws. Nothing will happen. And so, some of this is just procedural in the sense of, the question was just put to the manager, okay, who notifies whom? Who writes those board packets? Whose draft of the bylaws are we going to be looking at? And they're fair questions, but just understand, anything that is brought forward and is not approved by a majority of the Authority, it won't happen. So, I hope that we can all share in the desire to engage with each other constructively, identify the different interests, reconcile the interests, and move forward with the achievement of this thing and the realization of all the benefits that we expect from it. I'm excited at the prospect and at the council's continued involvement and the efforts of the Authority. Once they all get together and they kind of, you know, they're going to walk into a room, and you'll have twenty-seven people in that room. And they're all going to be looking at each other going, now what? So, but I think they will get themselves organized. And again, they will then, based on what they heard from us as the people who appointed them, they are going to define the actions and the purpose of the Authority. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to say congratulations to all the appointees. You know, and this has been a long road, but here we are, right? So, I think I want to congratulate all the appointees. And I want to lift up Reverend Mack. I think it was very important that we had someone who was representing the eighty thousand residents that were challenged by the plan. I don't think that there's anyone that doesn't think we need a plan, but there were important questions about displacement and small business and questions that people had challenges with. So, I think it's important that we do have a strong voice that's going to continue to ask those questions. And I hope that the other twenty-six members, I imagine they will, will make the same consideration. So, I'm looking forward to the next chapter So, I'm looking forward to the next chapter and putting this behind us and on to the next big thing. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing. Can I say, I'm sorry, last thing. Councilmember Mayfield, you mentioned the scoring, and thank you all for the committee. I would hope future councils or future committees not just base the recommendation on the scoring. I watched the interviews, and I didn't see any that lasted longer than ten minutes. They were an average of five minutes. So, I think that if the experience is a part of that matrix, is, or scoring metric, it's important that the interview be the icing on the cake and not the full consideration. Thanks.
All right. Mayor Protim.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is really a culmination of a generational point for our city and our region, and I'm very excited. I hear a little bit of overtone of worry, maybe, or, but this is really an exciting moment for us. We know that public transportation is critically important to our residents and our businesses and the growth of the region, and we've taken yet another step forward when so many thought that we weren't going to be anywhere near this step, Mr. Driggs. I've had the opportunity to work very closely with Mr. Driggs and Mr. Mitchell and others over the last couple of years on a variety of these efforts. And so, I am super excited for our community that this authority has some challenging things ahead of them, but it's challenging in a good way, because overall, if they get it right, it will greatly benefit our city. I also just want to thank the selection committee as well. I tried to watch as many interviews as possible, be present for as many interviews as possible. They did not have an easy job, and I want to thank every single person who stepped up and submitted an application and had the courage to come forward to succumb theirselves to an interview. And in that regard, I think we need to honor those twenty-six individuals who came forward to say, hey, I'd like to raise my hand to serve the community. And, Mr. Chair, Chair Mitchell, I don't know if you all, as a selection committee, conveyed to all of the applicants that they would have a scoring mechanism and that that would be published.
Oh, no.
If you didn't, I would ask that we extend them grace. Those interviews were very quick, as Ms. Johnson just said. There wasn't one that lasted more than fifteen minutes. And with the grace of stepping up to say, I'd like to serve my city, I certainly don't want us to publish those scores unless we had communicated that as a part of the process, that they would in fact be scored. I'm not sure if they knew that they would actually even be scored, but unless we communicated that to them, that that was a part of the process, I hope we honor all twenty-six individuals who raised their hand and not simply put forward a score that they might not have even known that they were going to, that was going to be tallied at the end. So, I don't know. Madam Attorney, Ms. City Attorney, do you have a point of view on the latter statement that I just made? Because I want to make sure we're all on the same page.
So, Ms. Anderson, the scores were part of the packet. These were public appointments, and so, they are public record and could be subject to inspection if requested.
Okay. That's fine. I just wanted to personally extend my thanks to all twenty-six individuals who came forward and put theirselves in the hot seat to answer questions for this committee. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I just wanted to check in. I'm sorry, I have people that have raised their hands. Ms. Brown?
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. I greatly appreciate that. So, this right here has been a headache, flat out. Congratulations to Mr. Mitchell, you carried the torch. You and Mr. Driggs and Councilmember Mayfield for sticking to the ground rules. She really did. She took some hits for that. And so, as we strayed and started to negotiate as a team, because there's no I N team we had, to do some serious negotiating, we did that. And for whatever criteria, we came up individually to place whoever we thought saw fit to move forward on that board, is what we did. I don't have a problem at all with the scores being posted. Thank you to our phenomenal attorney who we approved unanimously to be at this dais, to keep us in order and to make sure we're doing things according to our policy and transparency. So, if Councilmember Mayfield wants to post that, I definitely don't see anything wrong with that. Congratulations, one, to everybody that made it, to our twenty-seven first, and then, no, it was more than twenty-seven. What was it? How many interviewed?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six interviewed. Twenty-six interviewed. Congratulations to all twenty-six that interviewed to make it up that far. And then, to our appointees that we chose. This has been a challenge. This definitely shows teamwork, because we've had to negotiate, we had some team members to step out as a team lead in front of the person that they wanted to move forward. And so, definitely my negotiating skills were put to the test here. And I think I did a very good job with integrity, with decency and integrity with the way that we did it, but I don't think anything is wrong with the scores, especially since when we came back around and we did a round robin, and we came back and you had to negotiate who you originally was bringing to the playing field, Councilmember Mayfield. So, I think all information that was related to the MPTA could be posted on board for people, or they can request the records. Everything that we do is public records, they can request that anyway, so I don't think that's a big deal. But I do want to say to the committee, for doing the interviewing, for scanning through the resumes, all the credentials, that stuff is a headache. So, my head off to you guys for doing that and bringing it to us and making suggestions, even though the suggestions may not have moved forward in the manner in which you thought they would, but the teamwork with negotiating and trying to make sure that we had the best. I would like to say for the record, that I am the one that said that we should have someone on the board in opposition. That was me. I brought that forward. And I do appreciate the council agreeing to that, because I remember saying specifically and clearly that there was as many people that was for it, that was against it almost. And so, it's always important to have that voice of opposition on the board. So, I definitely want to clear that for this last council meeting, so folks know how I roll before I roll up out of here. Okay? So, thank you so much, and I give back to you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Ms. Watlington.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, first, I just want to say thank you to Mr. Manager. Mm-hmm. I got you. The other town managers, the policymakers, our lobbyists, our legislators, and our commission counterparts. Because it's been a long time coming, there have been previous discussions, even back to Assistant City Manager Taowu Jaioba, who helped lay the groundwork for what then became this plan. Thank you to the committee, Mr. Mitchell, Mr. Driggs, and Councilmember Mayfield, for the time that you all put towards this process. Thank you so much to the applicants who put yourselves out to serve, and to the residents who showed up. We had a very robust discussion in regards to this referendum, and absolutely, I'm pleased to have seen the differences in opinion and the level of study and engagement that we got from all sectors of our community. That's what it takes to build a better policy, is to have those community discussions. And so, my hope is that we don't end here, that it's not a pack it up, we lost, let's keep it moving. I hope that everybody in this community feels like they still absolutely have an opportunity to continue to be a part of these discussions. Certainly, there will be community engagement opportunities as we continue to move forward, as these studies are executed. And absolutely, there's going to be opportunities when we talk about how this plan and this authority and this work specific to the city, because beyond the work of the authority that's overarching our city, we've still got a whole lot of dollars that are coming down the pipeline for us to be able to spend. There are certainly many housing, transportation, and economic mobility conversations to be had. That work is underway. And absolutely, there are other opportunities to serve. If not on the Transit Authority, there are other transportation-related committees throughout the state and throughout the community that we will also be looking to make appointments for. So, please, definitely, if this is a passion area for you, if you've got interest, keep showing up. We want to know you, we want to understand what's important to you, and we hope that we can place your skills and your interests with the right role. I do want to say, too, that as we think about our broader region and where we go from here, we've done a lot of landmark work over the last several years, and hats off to you, Madam Mayor, for leading this work. We've got to start thinking about where do we go from here, and how do we play as the biggest city in this broader region? This is a concrete catalyst to say, it's not just about how we're planning our transportation system, but it's about how do we begin to operate very specifically as a region versus just one city? So, I look forward to casting that vision with you, and I look forward to our annual planning process. Thank you so much.
So, this concludes our business items.
Item seventeen.
I know.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I know. I've got item eighteen, so we've got to get that done, too, as well. So, we're not finished yet, but I do want to say that we are going to have a closed session as well, where there'll be two closed-session items that we're going to do. But what I was really trying to say is that now, I really appreciate all of the comments and everything that we've done in terms of mobility and the opportunities that we're creating for our community. I think that that is absolutely the very best thing that we could do, to give people opportunities to have jobs and places to go and be. So, the next item that we have on our agenda is that we have appointments to the Business Advisory Committee.
Oh, yeah.
And I will need, I will also need a raise of hands. There were only four votes for Nixonette Wright, and the other two candidates were tied with one each, one vote each. So, are there?
I'll make a motion.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion for Sarri Chakravarti to be appointed to Business Advisory Committee.
Second.
I'd like to make a motion for Ms. Wright to be appointed to the Business Advisory Committee.
Second. Okay. Madam Clerk, did you have that?
Yes, ma'am.
So, we have a motion. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Just one, one seat? Two people?
Yes, it's one appointment.
Okay, one appointment, then.
Madam Clerk, should we start with Ms. Nixonette? She had the most votes.
She has four votes.
She had four votes.
Is that the most?
Wright had four votes.
Yes, she had four votes, and Mrs. Chakravarti and McLean at one each.
So, would they even move forward? Because they only had these are votes.
I think she didn't have enough ballots, right?
She had four. I had four, six votes.
Yeah, so I think not everyone submitted their ballots.
They did, but they did not vote in that.
Yeah, I mean, they did not vote for the Business Advisory Council.
So, I guess, all right, so, I think we need to have a motion to approve between the one with two votes and the one with one vote. I mean, I'm not really sure.
We have a motion. Mr. Mitchell made the motion for Nixonette.
Nixonette.
And I second it.
Okay.
So, it's on the floor now.
Okay, so, any further conversation with this motion? All right, all in favor of the motion, please raise your hand.
This is for Nixonette.
For Nixonette.
Yeah, this is for Nixonette.
Nixonette. All right, ready? Okay, I believe that that's a number appropriate.
No, no, we have to go through it.
I know, we're going to go through it. One, two, three, four. Mr. Driggs, are you?
I'm afraid I'm one of the ones that missed the ballot. I don't know the individual.
Five, six, seven, eight, nine. Did I count nine? Okay.
Who's opposed? Any opposed?
And who's opposed to him? Anyone opposed?
So, that's unanimous.
Sorry.
That's unanimous.
It's unanimous. Okay. Wow. All right, so now, where we are going to go to council topics. I hope that everybody has had an opportunity to speak and had a lot among the conversations, but now, I think it's just a matter of, we're going to have council members speak, and you can choose over anything. I would suggest that we hold our comments to about three minutes so that we can go into the closed session with the two topics that we still will have on the agenda. So, who wants to start?
I will. Brown. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. I just want to take this opportunity right now, this time, to thank you, the city manager, all of our staff, even the ones that are here and the ones that are not here, for all the hard work that it takes, everybody that's listening, okay? The folks in constituent services, all the hard work it takes to run a council and to get things done. So, I want to just take, just not even three minutes, I don't know how much time you gave us, but just to say thank you, my gratitude. Some days, it's sunshine outside, others, it's a storm and it's raging. But we've been able to get things done and make things happen for the people that we love and matter the most, and that's our constituents. So, I'm leaving my time just to say thank you, because I know what it's like. People watching in think they know, you have no idea. And if you think you want to know, get your campaign together and run against these wonderful folks that do this work. But it has been an amazing running District Three. There is no voice like mine. I know that, I don't need anybody to tell me that. I am one of a kind. And I do, I just want to say to my colleagues, it's been a joy, for the most part, to represent District Three and to represent the people in the manner in which I came in and saying that I was going to represent them. And if you don't believe me, just ask my colleagues, because they told me I did it. All right, I give back to you, Madam Mayor, but thank you to all the staff.
Ms. Watlington.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Brown, I will co-sign that. Thank you so much. You have come in and you have led as only you can in District Three. So, thank you for being passionate, thank you for being authentic, and thank you for demonstrating through storms what it means to stand on your ten toes down and who you are. And so, I appreciate you for that, and thank you for how you have helped move this city forward through your representation.
Thank you so much, Dr. Watlington. That means a lot.
Absolutely. The only other comment I have is Happy Indigenous People Day is coming this week. So, I want you to enjoy your holiday.
Ms. Mayfield?
Earlier, I think, what, September, I sent an email that I copied you, as well as interim Attorney Fox on. As we are getting ready to swear in a new council, I asked for us to look into an update in our ethics policy, for there to be more clarity in the ethics policy moving forward for not only this council, but for new members coming in and all future councils, since we have put a lot of energy and emphasis on transparency and the desire to be as transparent as possible, making sure that if we have any business dealings, if we have any real estate that's within the city, that that is fully disclosed, so that we sitting around this dais are not potentially financially benefiting on the decisions that we are making regarding where investments are going, when we identify corridors of opportunity or areas, pre-planning for investment for any members or their family members to help purchase or attempting to purchase property in those areas for their personal business growth versus identifying, which you and I have done, with looking at properties to identify, to see if our partners could get access to them to try to control affordability in our community. So, I have not received an email update, which I was hoping prior to our new attorney coming in full-time. I know our interim Attorney Fox is working on it, but before we move forward and swear in new council, I would like to have a response to the update for our ethics policy moving forward, so that we can all be on the same page and be very clear about expectations as well as expectation of disclosure. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Peacock.
No report, Madam.
I think you probably had a few reports somewhere along the way this time, but thank you for that. Mr. Driggs, anything?
Mr. Manager and staff, these are bumpy times. We're playing for very high stakes. I just encourage you to hang in there. I appreciate you.
Mr. Graham?
Report.
Mayor Protim?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I just want to thank the community as well as staff and the city manager on how we handled something that was very much unexpected over the last week, two weeks in our communities, with a high concentration on East Charlotte and South Charlotte, but eventually permeating out throughout all of various communities throughout Charlotte. We, as a community, stood together, we supported our neighbors, we did a great job of exercising our First Amendment right, but being lawful and executing through that surge. And just very proud of staff, very proud, some very late nights, very early mornings, very proud of our community members and everything that they've done. And it's a shame, because in the wake of that, we've had such really good news earlier in that week around economic vibrancy and having, you know, companies like Scout bring their U.S. headquarters to Plaza Midwood, bringing twelve hundred good-paying jobs, having new companies like MERS.
bringing 1,200 good-paying jobs, having new companies like Maersk and Pacific Life say they're going to bring their East Coast headquarters here, their national headquarters here, bringing good-paying jobs and bringing an opportunity for the community to continue with the economic vibrancy, as well as social vibrancy as well. All three of these companies lean into community, and they encourage their employees to do the same, to get involved in the community. So, really great news around what we're doing as a city and as a region to attract good-paying jobs and to expand opportunities for our residents. And I just wanted to lift that up in the wake of such a heavy moment for our community and say thank you to the community and staff for everything you've done over the last two weeks. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Smudgy Mitchell?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I want to give a praise report to this council. Two years ago, we started on a journey of a landfill was about to be built near a community. And I think it was the second day, the second of December, Councilmember Mayfield joined me with 200 angry citizens. Then Allison Craig then was in charge of planning. We quickly put landfill in its own separate category. And so, tonight, I would tell you all, now that landfill has gone away, and we will see a single-family rezoning petition for that community. Lastly, what goes on in Salt Lake City stays in Salt Lake City.
What's Salt Lake City?
What? No, no, no. You don't get away with that.
That's right, Mayor. You should have been with us.
On a serious note, December 2nd, all our applications need to be in to serve on boards and commission. So, all my colleagues, I'm going to be pestering you to get your application in December 2nd. And last but not least, everyone have a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much.
All right, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a few things. I hope our next council, we can take a look at reducing the number of council members that it's required to put something on the agenda currently. If the public doesn't know, it takes six council members to get something on the agenda, and some would consider that a vote before the vote. So, I hope that we can really take a look. I know with the new council coming in, hopefully, even with our public speakers, with issues like, items like bicycle funding and funding for, more funding for the animal control, we know how long that took. I think council members, our voice, should be heard more, so I hope we can do that. Secondly, this was a tough week for immigration. You all know I've hosted re-entry simulations. I would love to have an immigration simulation, if we can take a look at that so that people understand the barriers to immigration and getting legal citizenship. I think it's a process that I know I can learn a lot more about. It can take years. So, I think if more people understood and empathized with the process, then you would have more understanding and empathy. So, we can talk about it, but I'd love to do something like that. And then, lastly, I want to thank the council members who are leaving. Mr. Peacock, Ms. Melina, and Councilwoman Tewana Brown. It's been an honor to serve with all of you. Your voice will be missed. And also, Councilmember Melina, I think we should give her a shout-out, because it took courage not to participate in tonight's vote. When she had the option, she stood on her recusal. So, it's just been an honor, and we'll stay in touch. But thank you, the West Side and District Three has truly benefited from your voice.
West Side is the best side, girl.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I want to wish you all a happy Thanksgiving. I hope you all relax and reconnect. Second, I want to thank council and staff, especially Sean Heath. He has worked 24/7 this past week to get the assistance out to impacted communities. I think he deserves a big hand. Mr. Heath reached out to all the impacted communities. He reached out to organizations in record time, and he found a way to support some of our most impacted communities. And many of these families are American citizens and green card holders who pay taxes that's been affected. So, I appreciate the work that the committee has done to support this impacted communities, our businesses. So, thank you, Mr. Heath, for your leadership. We are so grateful that you are part of Team Charlotte. We need more like you. And I also want to thank our colleagues, Mr. Peacock, Councilmember Brown, and Councilmember Melina. You know, after you start serving on the Charlotte City Council, you develop a level of respect for your colleagues, regardless of whether you agree with them or not, because it takes tremendous sacrifices to serve in this capacity. So, thank you all for your sacrifices to serve this community. It does not go unnoticed. So, thank you. I also want to welcome the new council members. I know we had Councilmember JD Masra Arias here earlier, as well as Kimberly Owens. She's still with us. And Councilmember-elect Jory Mayo. I look forward to working with you all. And lastly, I agree with Councilmember Johnson about immigration simulation. We actually did that exercise five years ago when we were working on Immigration Compass. And I thought that was a great way for people to understand the immigration process, how complex it is and how broken it is. So, I think it would be a great way for us to engage the community and help them understand the challenges that our immigrant community is facing, not just with the naturalization process, but just the whole immigration system. And I know when Frederico was with the City of Charlotte, he did help us with that. But I'm sure that his successor can continue with that simulation to ensure that our community understands the complexity behind the whole immigration. Our family, it took 15 years for our family to immigrate here. And you had to go through multiple hurdles to come to America. So, I think people don't realize how complex it is. And sometimes, unfortunately, immigrant communities are being used to score political points. And I think we need to do our part to ensure that we are putting out the right information and help people learn more about the whole system. Thank you.
I want to say thank you, guys. You did really great. I think, again, we're going to say this goodbye to Ms. Brown. Love having you. You've just been really great. And then, with Melina, I spoke with her this morning, and she's had some great news. I don't know if I'm supposed to actually say, but her daughter got into Savannah School of Art and Design. Which I think is an exceptional gift to have. So, that's really good. And so, if you're watching this, I hope that you understand how proud we are of what you've done and with your family. So, now, can we go right ahead to go into the closed session?
Don't we need a motion?
We have to have the attorney give us a motion, and we'll go into the closed session.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The motion to go into closed session is pursuant to NCGS 143-318.183 to consult with the city attorney to preserve the attorney-client privilege in the matter of failed construction company versus City of Charlotte, file number 24CVS 023884-590 filed in Mecklenburg County Superior Court, and pursuant to NCGS 143-318.1810 to view a recording release pursuant to NCGS 132-1.4A Body Worn Camera.
Root to approve?
Second.
Do you want to make?
All in favor?
Aye.
Call for a vote, please.
Call for a vote on the motion, please. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Ms. Brown, are you opposing or not?
No, I'm being...